Welcome to this morning's Queens Borough President's Remote Land Use Public Hearing. This hearing is being livestreamed on the link from the webpage of the Office of the Queens Borough President, which is www dot queensbp dot org. This is a remote land use public hearing pursuant to Governor Hoohoo's September 1st Executive Order reinstating the executive order suspending the open meetings law until January 2022. For those who wish to testify and haven't already preregistered for speaking time, you may do so by visiting www dot queensbp dot org forward slash land use. Please note, your opportunity to speak will follow those who are preregistered. Written testimony is welcome from those who are unable to testify, or written testimony must be received by 5:00 PM today. It may be submitted by email at planning at queensbp dot org, planning at queensbp dot org, or by conventional mail sent to the Office of the Queens Borough President at 120 dash 55 Queens Boulevard, Room 226 Q Gardens, New York 11424. Today, I am joined by Planning Director and Staff Irving Foy, Victoria Garvey, Vanessa Ordones, and Malik Sanders. And I don't know if Vanessa got back on. Vanessa, you may now please review how this public hearing will proceed.
You have just been advised on the proceedings of this hearing and how it will be conducted. Please keep your comments focused on the application you are speaking about. Please stay within the allotted three minutes. When you hear the signal, please wrap up and finish your comments. The Chair reserves the right to ask speakers for clarifications or further information regarding the application or comments.
Great, thank you. Vanessa, please call the first calendar item.
Calendar number one, ULP number 200299 ZMQ, 350 Beach, 79th Street rezoning, affected community board 14.
Good morning. I'm just gonna share my screen and then we'll get started. All right. Good morning. Thank you for having us. My name is Rachel Skoll. I'm an Associate at Greenberg Charred. We represent the applicant 79 Arvern Development LLC, owner of an approximately 107,000, 107,500 square foot development site at block 16100, lots 14, 18, and 20 on the north side of Rockaway Freeway. I'm joined today by Uri Kaufman and I believe Ira Schwartz on behalf of ownership. Our client purchased the site in January 2018 with a plan that involved converting an existing 34,500 square foot industrial building on the site to self-storage and constructing a new self-storage building on a vacant portion of the site. Instead, we realized that by pursuing the proposed rezoning, which would increase the FAR in the site from 1 to 2, we could retain the existing industrial building, which currently houses seven tenants and 55 employees, and construct a proposed 146,000 square foot self-storage building on a vacant portion of the site. The development site is located on the north side of Rockaway Freeway and the above ground subway tracks at the terminus of Beach 79th Street and what is currently an M11 district. It runs on Rockaway Freeway and backs onto Barbados Basin and is adjacent to Brandreth Creek to the west. Here you see the development site on a tax map. The area east of the proposed rezoning area is improved with industrial uses such as construction staging areas, auto repair centers, and a truck rental establishment. Blocks further east are improved with residential uses. And then blocks south of the proposed rezoning area separated from the site by above great subway tracks and additional vacant land are residential uses and institutional uses, including PS 183. Perhaps an easier way of seeing all that here is a Google map. And then, of course, the, here is the existing 34,500 square foot industrial building on the site. As I stated, it houses seven industrial tenants. If the proposed rezoning were approved, the existing building would have, would remain an industrial building, and the existing tenants would be able to remain in their existing spaces. The remainder of the development site is currently vacant. It was previously used as a contractor's yard, and this is where we're proposing the new building. And here is the zoning we're proposing is a change from an M11 to an M12. The proposed new building would be used as a self-storage facility. It would sit on stilts allowing for parking spaces beneath the occupiable portions of the building, which would lift the occupiable portions out of the floodplain, except for entrances, which should be at ground level and would, of course, be flood-proofed. The building would be approximately 90 feet tall from grade in compliance with the proposed zoning, and would have six floors of self-storage units containing approximately 950 storage units of various sizes. It'd have a total floor area of approximately 146,000 square feet. As part of the project, we would also be repaving the site's driveline with permeable pavers, planting a wetlands mitigation area adjacent to Barbados Basin pursuant to a DEC wetlands permit, adding landscaping at the front of the site, and adding picnic tables adjacent to the wetlands area. Pursuant to DEC's voluntary brownfields program, we have a plan in place to clean up hazardous materials at the development site that have resulted from approximately 100 years of prior industrial use. And here is a rendering of the, of what the building would look like. Without the proposed rezoning, we could have a total of 107,500 square feet of self-storage on the site. The proposed rezoning represents an increase of approximately 30,500 square feet of self-storage and would allow us to keep the investor, the existing industrial uses. The proposed rezoning area makes up a discreet area separated from low-density residential areas and more pedestrian-focused streets, allowing the area to support this increase in industrial density without disturbing nearby uses. Uses immediately surrounding the proposed rezoning area are industrial in nature and have been zoned for industrial uses since adoption of the 1961 zoning resolution. We had the opportunity to make a full presentation to Community Board 14's Land Use Committee, and the Land Use Committee voted unanimously in favor of this application. Unfortunately, we did not have the chance to make a full presentation to the full board, but the board's vote was 14 in favor, 12 against, and five abstentions. We believe some of the votes against and the abstentions were because of concerns that we had not presented the application to local civic associations. We had a good meeting with the community board's leadership almost a year in advance of our, of our land use hearing, and had a very good land use committee hearing. And the civic associations were never mentioned, and we were not aware, although in retrospect we should have been, that they would normally be included in the process. Since the September 9th full board meeting, my client has reached out and had a positive conversation with a representative of the Rockaway Beach Civic Association, who put us in touch with the president of Heart of the Rockways. I believe my client has plans to meet with tomorrow. At the request of the Land Use Committee and Chair Orr, we have been reaching out to Queens DOT to set up a meeting about the possibility of opening Beach 79th Street under the elevated subway tracks and installing a traffic light at the site in order to improve existing traffic patterns and allow left turns for vehicles traveling west on Beach Channel Drive and Rockaway Freeway. Now I'll hand it off to my client, Uri Kaufman, to provide more information about the demand for self-storage in the area.
Hello, my name is Uri Kaufman. Thank you very much for allowing us to present today. I'm, I've been a developer for almost 30 years. We bought this particular site in January of 2018, so it's actually going on four years. I actually grew up in Queens myself, and I live about 15 minutes away from the site. So it's always great to work near from home. I have done three storage facilities so far. We have two under development, including this one, and we've had many, many other projects across the state. I think we're best known for Harmony Mills, which is on the homepage of the New York State Historic Preservation website. We've been involved in over three years of permitting on this particular site. It's a very difficult site. As Rachel mentioned, there's over 100 years of industrial use and environmental contamination to be cleaned up. The site is a mess. In addition, the wetlands are in very poor condition. So working together with DEC, we've come together, come up together with a very, very detailed plan. It runs to hundreds of pages. We're going to clean up all the environmental contamination. We're going to replant and regenerate the wetlands and restore them to what they were, as you can see in that rendering. As far as storage is concerned, it's the perfect use for the Rockaway Peninsula. There is tremendous unmet demand. There's practically no storage on the peninsula anywhere. There's right now about 675,000 feet of unmet demand on the Rockaway Peninsula. Even after our facility gets built and a rival facility gets built, if assuming it does, there will still be about 425,000 feet of unmet demand in the Rockaway Peninsula. It's probably the most starved area of New York City as far as self-storage is concerned. Who are the people who use storage? Well, it's basically, it breaks down into three categories. It's people with small homes. As we all know, it's very hard to raise a family in an apartment, particularly an affordable housing apartment, which is quite a bit nearby. So this allows people a place to store their stuff. The second group are people in transition. It could be people moving. It could be soldiers mobilizing overseas. It could be someone going through divorce. There's plenty of that, particularly now during the pandemic. And then lastly, it's small business owners. It's anybody who's, who needs essentially small warehouses. That's every electrician, every plumber, every gardener, every landscaper, every artist, anyone with an Amazon business, eBay business. It really spans the gamut. There's a tremendous need for this kind of use among small businessmen. Small business people cannot use warehouses. Warehouses will not lease less than 10,000 feet. Plus, the person does not have direct access to their material. The warehouse owner will bring it out on a forklift. So there really is a tremendous need for what we call micro warehousing. And that demand is not being met at Rockaway at all today. Lastly, the issue of jobs. So the main job driver would be the industrial building that we are hoping to preserve. It's about 55 local jobs, mostly people who walk to work. The storage facility itself, though, in addition to the maybe six or seven direct jobs and all the construction jobs, there will be, it's basically a job facilitator. As I said, there's a lot of these small businessmen, and this is what makes it possible for them to be in business. So thank you very much for hearing us, and I'll turn things back to Rachel.
Happy to take any questions. Thanks, Uri.
Alrighty, great. Why does this area, well, they rezone, why does the area to be rezoned include the partial lots that are not, that are not part of the proposed development site?
Sure. Let me go back to the tax map. It'll make it a little bit easier to explain this. So when city planning draws zoning district boundaries, they generally will draw them to the center line of streets or a certain distance from a street. The streets here are kind of interesting in that they happen to also be tax lots. So the partial lots that you see included here at the south of the rezoning area, those are sidewalk and street beds. They're owned by the city. And then on the, on the west side here, we have this line 200 feet from what is a, an easement for a street widening. On the west side here, this is also owned by the city and-
Those are, are those, those are the HPD sites?
Um, you know, and I forget which ones are HPD and which ones are DCASTs. I think HPD owns part of the street. And DCAST owns, I believe, DCAST owns the creek. So the only other private property being partially rezoned here is this small slipper of Lot 24.
But this stretches across what we call the L, the subway track.
Right. Right. So it's going under there.
And it would be, it would be part of the M12.
It would, but I, I don't believe that area would generate floor area because it's a street. It's a little bit odd to see them as tax lots.
Okay, got it. Can you go through how many jobs you anticipate in the operations hours?
Sure. Uri, would you like to go through that?
Yeah, I mean-
Let me just add, I heard you reached out to the Rockaway Beach Civic Association, and they have nothing to do with the community here. They represent the western portion of the Rockaway. So I would also suggest you reach out to, there's a public housing development there, the Hamels Tenant Association, and of course, the other association you mentioned is within the geographical area. So it makes sense. I just want to make sure.
I appreciate that comment, but we have reached out to them already. I'm supposed to-
Hamels, okay.
Mr. Edmund, Edmund Williams tomorrow. We actually had two meetings prior that got shifted. One time I couldn't make it last minute, one minute he couldn't, and so, yeah.
But I'm more, so, okay, I know him too. Hamels Tenant Association, did you reach out to them?
We've reached out to them.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. And, and, and you talk, and as you get into the conversation around jobs, since you have Hamels Houses there, it would be good to do some outreach efforts there as well with the civic, if they're, you know, there are going to be job opportunities. So I'm looking forward to hearing how that goes.
Absolutely. We'll definitely do that.
And then just go through the, how many jobs you anticipate in the office of operations and how many days a week?
Well, we're open seven days a week. So I think you, and you typically need at least two people on site each time. Then you're also going to need a custodial person. So I think when you count the back office jobs, we're looking at six or seven direct jobs, something like that.
And no manufacturing uses outside of the self-storage?
Outside the manufacturing building, that's correct.
Alrighty, pretty straightforward. I don't know, Irving, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Alrighty. Alright, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alrighty, I'm gonna go to calendar item number seven. Are the developers here for that, for the 31st Street and Hoyt Avenue rezoning?
Good morning, Borough President. Yes, we, we are here.
Okay, alright, you may present.
Great, thank you.
Oh, hold on, sorry. Are there any members that are public who wish to testify on the prior application that we just went through?
We have no speakers for that.
Alright. Alright, seeing none, we'll close this item out, and we'll go back, we'll go back to, now we'll go to 31st Street and Hoyt Avenue.
Calendar number seven and eight, ULP 210200 ZMQ and ULP number N210201 ZRY. 31st Street and Hoyt Avenue rezoning, affected community board one.
Okay, good, good morning, Borough President, staff and, and members of the community. My name is Frank Saint-Jacques. I'm an Associate with Acreman LLP. We're Land Use Council on, on the project. I'm joined with several project team members. We have a somewhat lengthy presentation. I'll try to go through it quickly, and myself and members of the project team will be available for, for questions afterwards. We're here to present an application for rezoning to redevelop three transit-oriented sites on 31st Street with mixed-use buildings. The project vision is to revitalize the section of 31st Street near the recently renovated Astoria Boulevard Station with significant community benefits, including permanently income-restricted housing under MIH Option 1, community facility space with youth and senior programming, a daycare, and local retail along with associated jobs. This application requests two zoning actions. The first action is a zoning map amendment to change the existing C43 and R5B zoning districts to C45X and C44 zoning districts. The second action is a zoning text amendment to establish the mandatory inclusionary housing program, or MIH, within the rezoning area. The purpose of these actions is to facilitate the development of three sites on this portion of the 34th, 31st Street corridor with mixed-use buildings with a total of 278 units, and under MIH Option 1, approximately 67 would be permanently income-restricted. So as shown in this aerial view, the rezoning area includes three development sites. This area is highly transit-oriented with the Astoria Boulevard Station right at the southern edge of the rezoning area. And there's, there's also access to several bus lines. It's within the transit zone. And I'll note that you can see the elevated tracks which run along 31st Street, as well as Hoyt Playground in the surrounding area. And you can also see from this aerial view the context along 31st Street, which is mostly commercial and mixed-use with lower-density residential beyond 31st Street to the east and west. This slide shows the existing context around development site one, the southernmost development site. The elevated railway above 31st Street really dominates the streetscape here. It's quite dark and desolate at night, and there's currently very little active ground floor use despite being right next to the Astoria Boulevard Station. Essentially, once you're off the train, there's very little local retail, or local retailer service uses. And this area really lacks the types of local retail and services you would expect to find concentrated around a transit resource like Astoria Boulevard Station. So this is the existing conditions of development site one. And I'll just move to the proposal for development at development site one, which is shown here on this slide. With the rezoning, we propose to develop an 11-story mixed-use building with 51 units, 13 of which would be permanently income-restricted under MIH, as well as a commercial and community facility component. The community facility is intended as a daycare center. And the chart at the bottom of the screen shows the breakdown of the market rate and MIH units. Again, that would be 51 total, 13 of which would be permanently income-restricted. And well over half the units are two- and three-bedrooms, as you can see on the chart. These next few slides just show some illustrious renderings. And, you know, in comparison to the existing conditions, you can see how this new development would really reinvigorate this corner and activate the streetscape with new ground floor active uses versus the existing today right at the entrance to the train station. So moving just north across 24th Road is development site two. This is an existing one-story commercial building occupied by a Staples Retail Store as, as well as its unenclosed parking lot, which is fenced off. Again, you see that this streetscape is, is, you know, essentially dominated by a blank street wall. It's, again, dark and, and not active in the evening. And in contrast, the proposed development would redevelop this, this site with a new 12-story mixed-use building with 161 units. This is the largest of the three development sites. It has roughly 275 feet of frontage along 31st Street. So this is really an opportunity to, you know, bring active street life to this portion of, of 31st Street. Within the 161 total units, 40 of which would be permanently income-restricted. Again, this would be under MIH Option 1. And this site would have about 14,000 square feet of commercial floor area, as well as just shy of 4,000 square feet of community facility floor area, which would be programmed with senior services. Hannock is going to be the MIH administrator for this project, as well as we're working with them to provide programming for two of the community facility spaces. And I'll, Hannock will speak in, in a few moments later in the presentation. This building would also have a good mix of smaller and, and larger unit sizes. About half, or actually just over half of the units are two- and three-bedroom, as shown in the chart at the bottom of the screen. So I'll move through these next few slides showing the renderings of the building. Again, activating that, that very long street frontage around 31st Street and wrapping 24th Road. And just moving forward to the northernmost development site, which is just north of 24th Avenue. Again, you can see here the, the existing conditions. And moving forward to the proposed development, this is, would be developed as an 11-story, a mixed-use building with 64 units, 16 of which would be permanently income-restricted under MIH. This building would have about 7,500 square feet of commercial floor area, and then about 8,000 square feet, which would be used, or be programmed by Hannock with, with youth programming. I'll note that this, this building initially had more smaller units, studios and ones. We increased the number of two- and three-bedrooms to the existing unit distribution shown, or, excuse me, to the unit distribution shown in the bottom of the screen, reducing the overall number of units down to 64, but increasing the, the number of twos and threes. So, you know, it's, it's just under half, or 45% are two- and three-bedrooms as shown in the chart. Some additional renderings. Again, similarly, this, the intention is to activate that, that ground floor with new commercial uses to bring life to the, this portion of the 31st Street corridor. This aerial view shows a, a rendering of the, the three buildings in context. As you can see, the, the elevated train line runs along 31st Street. And I'll note that 31st Street is a wide street, as well as on the southern edge of the rezoning area, Hoyt Avenue North and Astoria Boulevard and the approach to the bridge create very wide streets. And as you can see on the southern edge of the screen, we're immediately adjacent to a, a mass transit resource. So this slide shows the breakdown of the, all three projects of the 67 permanently income-restricted units under MIH Option 1, which requires a weighted average of 60% AMI with an income band at 40% AMI. 26 units would be provided at 40% AMI, 25 units at 60% AMI, and 16 units at 80% AMI. And these AMIs correspond with the median household income for, for both the surrounding census tracts, the Steinway Neighborhood Tabulation Area, and the overall Queens Community District 1. Also note that there is a very low vacancy rate in, in all three, both the census tract, excuse me, in, in the census tract, the NTA, and the overall community board. So we, we believe that new housing is, is a critical need in the area, and in particular, new housing that provides very low and low-income housing as, as this project would. So I'm gonna turn it over to Silas Levitt from Hannock, just to discuss their involvement. He'll briefly run through their, their role in the project, and then I'll, I have a few more slides after him, and then we'll conclude our presentation.
Hello and good morning. My name is Silas Levitt, and I'm the Housing Development Coordinator for Hannock. I'm here with Stacy Gliagos, our Executive Director, Richard Winslow, our Director of Property Management, and Paula Duran, our Director of Housing Development. I'm just gonna start with providing some basic information about Hannock. We're a nonprofit organization founded in 1972 in Astoria that provides a wide range of programs and services to people throughout New York City. We currently serve over 30,000 community members from youths to older adults. We also own 650 units of affordable housing in Queens and are the property management agent of affordable units located in four different buildings throughout the borough. We're fully committed to the development of affordable housing within New York City, and especially Queens and Astoria, and we support any efforts towards that goal. For this project, we've been engaged in a dual capacity, both as a mandatory inclusionary housing agent and then also as a social services provider. As an MIH agent, Hannock will be responsible for ensuring that the 67 mandatory inclusionary housing units are rented in compliance with the zoning provisions and applicable guidelines. In particular, Hannock will provide the following services for this project: advertisement and marketing of the affordable units, management of the Housing Connect lottery process, processing lottery applications received, selection of tenants for the affordable units, managing the initial lease-up and move-in of the affordable units, and then on an ongoing basis, managing the waitlist and providing long-term quality assurance and compliance for the affordable units, as well as referring any tenants for additional social services on an as-needed basis. Next slide, please. As I mentioned previously, Hannock has been providing social services to the Astoria community for nearly 50 years. I'm going to take this opportunity to highlight some of our extent social services programming and then discuss the programs that we are proposing to run as part of this project. As you can see from the slide, we run quite a broad range of programs for both youth, adults and families and older adults. Most of our youth programs are funded through the New York City Department of Youth and Child Development and include a mix of after-school and summer programs such as Astoria Corner Zone, Councilmatic, DYCD Beacon Programs with locations in both Astoria and Corona, Compass, aka the Comprehensive After-School System Program, Sonic, aka Schools Out New York City, and the DYCD Summer Youth Employment Program. For adults and families, we run a mix of educational workforce development programs like high school equivalency classes, ESL, English as a Second Language classes, and our Jobs to Build On Program, which operates out of Harlem. We also provide more direct and adult and family services as well, including legal victim assistance and immigration support, in addition to health access and alcohol and substance abuse treatment through our Oasis program. For older adults and seniors, we manage four senior centers through our Queens, three of which are located in Astoria, Ravenswood Senior Center, the Hannock Archbishop Yakovo Senior Center, and the Hannock JBL Harmony Innovative Senior Center, which is essentially across the street from the project site. Along with these senior centers, we also provide transportation services through East-West Connection, as well as a caregiver, SNAP, and information referral programs, among others. Next slide, please. For this project, we are proposing to extend the following programs to the project site. All of these are dependent on receiving additional funding from the city and/or state. But while the final suite of programs, so while the final suite of programs are slightly different, we feel that the programs listed here represent a good mix based on the needs of the Astoria community. We're proposing a mix of older adult and senior programming, workforce development, LGBTQ plus counseling, and youth and- LGBTQ plus counseling, and youth and after-school programs. For senior services, this would be an extension of our existing information referral program to seniors in the Astoria area, as our current iteration of programs located in the Bronx. The INR program provides case management, social events like bingo night, museum field trips, and information referrals related to social security benefits, Medicare, Medicaid, SNAP, and other public assistance programs. For workforce development, Hannock provides a workforce development program for adults aged 18 and up. Services include high school equivalency classes, ESL classes, and an extension of our Jobs to Build On program. We also want to provide a counseling service for LGBTQ plus Astoria residents, as well as one for older adults who are members of the Astoria and Queens communities. These counseling services could also dovetail with our legal and immigration services already existing in the Astoria area. Last but not least, we are also proposing a youth slash after-school program at the site. This could include both after-school and summer-based employment programs such as Astoria Beacon, Compass, Cornerstone, or the DYCD Summer Youth Employment Program. As I mentioned previously, the inclusion of these programs will be determined based on the funding we're able to receive from the city and state at the time of the completion of the project. The programs I mentioned are more like a wish list for the site based on what we hope to achieve and provide for the Astoria community moving forward. Thank you very much for your consideration, and I'm going to pass the talking back to Frank from Hannock.
Great, thanks, Silas. And I'll note that Hannock will be available for questions when we conclude the presentation. I'm just going to have a few more slides, and I'll note that the applicants intend to incorporate several sustainability measures into the developments that will improve efficiency and reduce emissions. These buildings will comply with all Building Code Energy and Efficiency requirements and the Climate Mobilization Act requirements with respect to building emissions and providing sustainable features on the roof. I went through it quickly, but if you note that on the aerial view, you can see that green roofs have been incorporated into the design of each of the buildings. Moving forward, we estimate, based on a conservative analysis, that at least 193 jobs would be created by the proposed developments. We've also come to an agreement with 32BJ for prevailing wage building service worker jobs. These applicants also have made a commitment to local and MWB hiring, and as part of that, we're partnering with Urban Upbound, not only on the local and MWB hiring aspect, but also with respect to job placement and workforce development. So I just, we'll close the presentation by taking a few moments to review the existing and proposed rezoning, and then we'll conclude the presentation. This slide shows the proposed C45X and C43 zoning proposed that stretches along the east side of 31st Street from Hoyt Avenue North and Astoria Boulevard to just, to 200 feet north of 24th Avenue. So the existing zoning is, C43 zoning is shown on the left-hand side of the screen, and the proposed zoning is shown on the right. The rationale is to promote new housing development with mandatory inclusionary housing on wide streets near mass transit. I'll note that the existing zoning is C43. It's an R6 residential equivalent. And the graphic here is from the Department of City Planning's Zoning Handbook, and it essentially illustrates, in a general way, what the development is possible within the C43. So you can see that there's options for the type of development. There's either quality housing, which is higher lot coverage, lower buildings, shown on the right-hand portion of the graphic, or much taller height factor zoning. And depending on the size of the site, which we'll show you in a moment, height factor buildings are governed by something called a sky exposure plane that kicks in above 60 feet, allowing, you know, 13 or more stories, depending on the size of your development site. So we performed an analysis of comparing the existing to the proposed zoning. I'll just run through this quickly. Essentially, the C43 allows a total maximum FAR of 4.8. The C45X allows a total maximum FAR of 6.5, so that's an increase of 1.7 FAR. And the C44 has a total, and sorry, I just realized that the C44 and the C45X total maximum FAR are swapped here. The C44 is up to 6.5, and the C45X is up to 6. So that's a 1.2 and a 1.7 bump in FAR. I think what's significant and what we want to drive home is that, you know, today, with as-of-right zoning, due to the height factor regulations which are permitted in the C43, using the sky exposure plane and with no height limit, we've performed some, or prepared some illustrative renderings and zoning calculations, which I'll show you in a moment. And essentially, you could build 11 to 18-story buildings on these development sites. There would be no requirement for mandatory inclusionary housing, whereas the proposed developments would all contain a mandate to provide that 25% under MIH Option One. So you can see that the heights are roughly the same. We're proposing 13 and 14, or the maximum height limits are 13 and 14 stories. And I'll just move to the next slide, which shows a breakdown of as-of-right development versus what's, what's been proposed at each of the sites. As-of-right, we could build an 11-story building with 27 units on the southernmost development site, Development Site One. And what we've proposed is a 51-unit 11-story building. 13 of those units would be income restricted under MIH Option One. Moving forward to Site Two, and I'll show you this, the rendering in a moment. It's, there's, it's possible to build an 18-story building under height factor regulations. In contrast, we're proposing a 12-story building. There'd be 73 additional housing units, 40 of which, however, would be income restricted. Similarly, Site Three, as-of-right, a 12-story building is possible. We're proposing an 11-story building, and there would be roughly 34 more units, 16 of which would be income restricted. So in total, as-of-right development would allow about 145 units. We're proposing these three development sites be developed with about 131 more units. That's a total of 276 units. And really, what, what the difference is, is that the as-of-right zoning versus the proposed zoning, the envelope is roughly the same, but more housing is able to be produced, and 25% of the residential floor area would be required to be income restricted under MIH Option One. So the, the result is 67 units of mandatory inclusionary housing versus no required affordable housing in the as-of-right scenario. So just to provide some context, this is an illustrative rendering showing, or, excuse me, massing, showing the three development sites. You know, as, under as-of-right, C43, there, it's possible to develop an 11-story building on the southernmost site, an 18-story building on the middle site, as it's the largest, and then a 12-story building on the third development site to the north. So that concludes our presentation. As I noted, there are several members of the project team here, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Frank, and thank you to your entire team. The Borough President had to step away, so I'll be taking over for him. My name is Frank Joseph, Chief of Staff and Senior Advisor for the Borough President. I know you had mentioned briefly some of the Community Board One's objections as well. What are, can you reiterate some of the changes that you made in order, or plan to make in order to be responsive to the objections that they raised?
Sure. You know, I'll, I'll start with, you know, initially, Development Site Two was, was proposed as a 14-story building. When we initially met with them, with Community Board One's Lane Use Committee in the spring before the project was certified, we heard some concerns regarding the, the potential height, that there's concerns regarding that. And so the architect reworked that building and brought it down by, by two stories. We also heard concerns regarding the number of family-sized units, you know, within the proposed plans. Development Site Three, we had eliminated studios altogether and took out about 21 bedroom units and replaced them with, with two and three bedroom units, winding up with sort of roughly half ones, and, and then a larger portion of twos and threes on that third development site. We also met with neighbors on the 32nd Street who abut the property. You know, we, we understand that they have concerns related to construction of, really any construction, as it relates to their homes, their older homes, many of which are pre-war. And this is common in New York City. There's actually very extensive protections that are required legally under the Building Code, under the Department of Environmental Protection, noise and air quality codes. And also, as part of the environmental analysis for this project, each of the three developers have agreed to certain additional construction noise and construction air quality protections that would be put into place. And those would be memorialized in restrictive declarations that would be recorded against each of the properties. So not, not only are there an existing array of legal protections for abutting property owners and within the code, including pre-construction surveys, monitoring, the requirement for access agreements, but there are also additional protections in place that the applicants have agreed to. I'll also note that, you know, with respect to Development Site Two, whereas the existing commercial building, the Staples building, is essentially at the property line, so abutting the rear yards of those existing homes on 32nd Street, that the design pulls back by eight feet to remove that, that existing building from being right at their rear property
And with all those changes to, to the units, the, you know, how many stories that there are, has this impacted some of your percentages when we start looking at affordability? Are we still remaining at the same percentage levels?
So what, what I showed in the presentation is, incorporates all of those changes. What we note is, is that, you know, MIH Option One requires that weighted average of 60% AMI, with 10% at 40% AMI. So we'll, those changes are all incorporated into the numbers that were shown in the chart, and we're happy to share that with the Borough President's Office, you know, after the presentation. But we think we've, we've, you know, found a good balance of the very low income at 40% AMI and 60% AMI, with about 10% at 80% AMI, which is consistent with the, the local AMIs for the area. Irving, any other, any questions from here?
Yeah. One of the Community Board concerns was about the construction. Can you talk a little bit about how each of the three sites, is there any schedule? And how might construction be coordinated if they're going simultaneously to, you know, cut down on the construction traffic impacts, that kind of thing?
Sure.
Deliveries, materials, that kind of thing.
Sure. So I'll, I'll just start by saying, you know, a full environmental analysis was, was performed relating to potential construction impacts on the surrounding area, and it was determined that there would be no significant adverse impacts. Part of that, you know, is a, you know, I mentioned the commitment that each of the developers made as it relates to construction noise and construction air quality. The, each of the property owners is also working on a logistics plan, which we agreed to, that will be comprehensive, that we agreed to share with the neighboring property owners. They're, they've also made some commitments just based on initial engineering and geotech analysis, that they would not be using driven piles, that the foundations for each of these buildings are likely to be spread concrete footings, and any piles that would be required, again, I think this is minimal, would be drilled rather than driven. It's, it's really in, you know, so I'll take a step back and note that, you know, there is, there is a, it's very likely that if this rezoning weren't to go through, the, each of the owners would proceed with as-of-right development. So the, the construction concerns are something that are top of mind for each of these owners, you know, for, in terms of as-of-right development or proposed development. It's, you know, essentially the same concerns regardless, and they have an, an interest in working with the, the surrounding property owners, not only to come to terms with respect to access agreements, which will likely be required to provide protections to those abutting properties, but also to set up pre-construction surveying and, and construction monitoring. This is a, you know, very large construction project, so there will also have to be coordination as it relates to equipment, moving in trucks, et cetera. And we have committed to the 32nd Street Association, those are the abutting homeowners to the east, to provide that information in a logistics plan, as we move a little bit closer to, we're, we're still working with, with engineers and construction professionals to, to come up with that plan.
Through construction, there would be coordination with Department of Transportation?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, you know, between the Department of Buildings, the Department of Transportation, and the Department of Environmental Protection, as well as the, the MTA, or New York City Transit, because of the adjacent, or the elevated train line that runs along 31st Street, there, there's going to be extensive city oversight on, on the, the construction that occurs at these three sites.
You know what the notification requirements are to the local community board, or even the local homeowner?
Yeah, absolutely. So if you just give me one moment to grab my notes, the, there's a Department of Buildings Code requirement that, I believe it's, just check if it's 30 or 60 days. Sorry, there's a notification to be provided to the adjoining property owners at least 60 calendar days before the commencement of, of work. And this notification has to describe the nature of the work, the estimated schedule and duration, details of inspections or monitoring to be performed on the adjoining property, and protection to be installed on the adjoining property, as well as contact information. I'll note that each of these sites would be required to have construction site safety coordinators or managers to be a direct point of contact. We've also committed to maintaining contact with the local community board to be a, you know, direct point of contact if there's issues, in addition to the, the site safety manager or coordinator at, at each of the construction sites. We'll also note that because access agreements would, would be required to perform any of this work, we'll have to have direct contact, or the property owners will have to have direct contact with, with each of the adjoining property owners to enter into those agreements. And, you know, those access agreements are subject to the consent and review by legal representatives for each of those adjoining property owners.
That sounds like notification of work, of the work to commence within 60 days. I think what I was getting at was more like, let's say, delivery, you know, large trucks delivering heavy materials, notification to the neighborhood that, you know, on such-and-such day, we will have large trucks or deliveries, that kind of thing.
Yeah. Irving, this is Steve Sinekewery. We could certainly, we could certainly agree to that. We don't really plan on using the 32nd Street for any of our, our construction staging. Normally, what we do is we work with DOT in advance to have, you know, the deliveries made in, in front of the site. There's an area that will be reserved, but we're happy to go beyond what is ever required by code. And we could work, you know, either through your office or the community board to notify, to notify everyone that there'll be materials delivered on, you know, such-and-such day.
Right. That's what I'm getting at, you know?
Yes. That, that's, that's, that's something that we would be happy to do as a good neighbor.
Yeah. We don't want anyone being surprised and being stuck in their driveway because a large measure of the reason.
That, that, what we would do is we would have a designated area along 31st Street where the materials would be delivered. We would, we would certainly not be doing any of this on 32nd Street where the homes are. It's, it's not, it's, it's not what we it's not what we, it doesn't make any sense.
And one more question about the construction. I'm sorry, one more question about the affordability. So you're committing to option one and affordability?
That's correct. Only option one has has been proposed as as part of our application.
Okay. And my second part of my question is really about HANNIC. I I believe I heard in the presentation that they'll be running a number of your programs. I had a question about the funding. Are they doing this with already funded programs? Or are these programs that would be funded as they're?
They would be, they would be funded on a going forward basis because obviously the buildings are not built, and it's going to take a number of years to the, to develop the building. So they would be funded on a going forward basis.
Thank you. I I have no other questions.
We have a number of people, members of the public, who definitely want to, you know, testify regarding this and share their remarks. So we're going to go there. I just want to remind everyone that you do have three minutes to share your remarks and your thoughts. And we do have a buzzer, which will let you know when time is up. So I'll pass it on to Vanessa, who will call folks who are in the queue right now.
First, we have Jennifer Moreyall.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you to Borough President Richards and your staff for the opportunity to speak and your willingness to listen. My name is Jennifer Moreyelli, and I am here as a constituent to recommend not adopting U L E R P items number two one zero two zero zero Z M Q and number N two one zero two zero one Z R Q. I am an owner on Thirty Second Street behind proposed site three. We live on our property and also rent out part of the property. I am concerned that a building of this size will make our property untenable, not only during the noisy construction period with dust and debris, but also after construction with its comparatively giant size compared to the rest of the neighborhood. I am worried we will lose our tenants and income because of the construction and the lower standard of living brought with it. I've seen the drawing showing the shadows this building will cast. We will be put completely in a shadow that will extend three blocks each way, all the way from the Bohemian Beer Garden to past Thirty Fourth Street. I and many of my neighbors are avid gardeners, and this will be a huge disappointment and loss. Lack of proper sunlight on our property will decrease our standard of living and mental health. We lived in our house for the entirety of the pandemic, and our access to sunlight and the ability to have a garden is vital to our mental health and making our property tenable. I'm also concerned about what steps will be taken to ensure our privacy in our backyard space and to mitigate light pollution after construction. When buildings went in down the street, there were lights that were on twenty-four seven that flared into our windows at night. This building will be an eyesore in our neighborhood. The design does not fit in with the character of Astoria and will change our skyline hereafter. Astoria is not Long Island City. Part of Astoria's appeal is that it is not Long Island City. We are a quiet, family-oriented neighborhood of mostly two and three family homes and don't have the necessary infrastructure to support a building of this size. As a young couple, my husband and I hope to raise a family in this house. We are greatly concerned that public schools are already overcrowded, and this building will only add to the already existing burden on our education system. I am highly concerned that the developer has not addressed any of the community's questions that we were promised answers to after the meeting they hosted for local residents over two weeks ago. They had not even shared a rendering of the back of the proposed buildings that will abut our home until Tuesday night. They have come across as having no respect for the near one hundred year old homes that line our block. We, we put a lot of love into making our old house a home for us and our tenants. We are scared for the amount of damage and stress construction of this magnitude will cause to our home and our lives. The developers have not shown us that they care about their neighbors. In fact, most of our neighbors wouldn't even be aware of this for the actions of a few neighbors working hard to spread the word. I understand something will be built here eventually, but why is this rezoning necessary when they are only providing a minimum benefit to the community? Why are we rezoning only these two spaces? And with our seat on city council empty, who is looking out for our neighborhood? I implore you to protect our neighborhood and allow it to grow in a way that can benefit the community as a whole. When you campaigned, you promised to look out for the owner occupied two and three family homes of Queens. Now is your chance to fulfill that promise. Vote no on this rezoning. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Jennifer. Vanessa, we'll go to the, unless there's anything that Frank, you'd like to say, Vanessa, we'll go to the next presenter.
Next, we have Carol Wilkins.
Hello, all. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, everyone. My name is Victoria, and I'll be reading on behalf of Ms. Carol Wilkins, who is unable to attend today. So reading testimony on her behalf. Good morning, all. I pray everyone is well. My name is Carol Wilkins, and I am a fifty-plus-year resident of Ravenswood Houses, currently serving as the president of the Ravenswood Resident Association. I'm speaking today in support of the Thirty First Street rezoning because it will bring new investment and community facilities to our neighborhood. This project will benefit the neighborhood and the residents of Ravenswood Houses by providing a space for a new youth center and a new senior center. The senior center onsite intended to be operated by HANNIC will bring much-needed senior programming and activities to Thirty First Street and a new home for HANNIC to provide these services in. The center will promote healthy aging by giving seniors access to multiple resources and encouraging them to stay active and engaged in their community. Above all else, I am looking forward to having a new community partner who has the best interest of our community at heart. I fully support the proposed rezoning and request that you consider its approval. Thank you and best wishes, Ms. Carol Wilkins.
Thank you so much for for that, for reading on her behalf. Irving, you had something that you wanted to also say?
Oh, no. I think later on, we may want the development team to respond to some of the things that we've heard.
Awesome. Vanessa, hold on to the next person.
Next is Joe Moreyall.
We have a Jennifer Moreyall.
Hey, this is Joe. I may be showing up on a different angle. Thank you. Good morning, Borough President Richards and fellow neighbors. My name is Joe Moreyelli. I am here as a constituent to recommend against adopting U L E R P items twenty one oh two zero zero Z M Q and N twenty one oh two oh one Z R Q. I'm a ten-year resident of Community Board One, first as a renter, and now alongside my wife, a homeowner. While my written comments provided earlier this morning go into much more detail, here are some key takeaways I urge you to consider before voting. Even if this action does not pass, the applicants are free to develop mixed-use commercial and residential properties without rezoning. They are also welcome to offer M I H units without rezoning. Having additional housing stock and M I H units in a neighborhood is a laudable goal. Rezoning is not a prerequisite for this outcome. The E A S and the applicant's presentation are free of any identified need for this change, and I subsequently proposed the applicants have failed to meet this basic threshold for approval even after submitting a revised E A S this summer. As the E A S plainly lays out, and my comments explore in detail, approving this request will raise throughput at the Astoria Boulevard subway station beyond its design criteria. This will result in a condition where the platform is unable to disgorge the passengers disembarking during peak times, potentially resulting in unsafe conditions for our neighbors. The E A S tries to downplay this by saying that the impact does not rise to the level of, quote, significantly adversely impacted, but this is akin to saying the house is okay because only the kitchen is on fire. The incremental traffic this proposal states it will bring in the E A S will come at the cost of roads more hostile to pedestrians and bikers alike. It will add dozens of vehicles to the nightly queue of drivers searching for on-street parking, even as we keep supply constant. More cruising means more emissions and greater potential for accidents. Borough President Richards, I ask you to continue making good on your campaign promise to support bikers and pedestrians and to make commuting safer for Queens residents. The situation for our public schools is like that of subways, except the schools are already beyond capacity, even in the case of no action. If you are interested in rezoning along Thirty First Street, should it not be part of a concerted effort that draws city and state partners into the conversation? Should we not lever these partners first to acquire educational and transit resources that can scale with the growth of the neighborhood? Why do these properties need to be rezoned when the applicants are already able to accomplish their goals of mixed-use development under the current zoning tax? At its core, this is a question of consent. The applicants are asking for you to consent to much more than a simple rezoning. They want your consent to build out of character with the zoning that D C P laid down with extensive community input in two thousand and ten. They want your consent to busy our streets with new cars looking for parking. They want your consent to create unsafe conditions at the Astoria Boulevard train station. They want your consent to overcrowd our schools. They don't need it. I encourage you to join Community Board One in overwhelmingly voting against this proposal and share these and any other concerns you have with the city council. Thank you for your time and consideration. I yield the remainder of my time.
Joe, I appreciate it. Vanessa, we'll go on to the next person.
Next is Nikia George.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, good morning. It is an honor and a pleasure to speak with you. And I wanted to speak on behalf of the rezoning for calendar number seven. And I wanted to speak about how I'm for it. And the reason I'm for it is because they mentioned a lot of different programs that people from the community could benefit from. And there's a lot of people who don't have access to parks and and daycares, and the list goes on of what they were speaking of. And we're so interested in like seeing what comes from them and what and what and what to look forward to and what we would gain from having that built. And I wanted to also touch on that I do believe that they do care about what's going on in the area because if they don't need our, if they don't need our help or anything like that, or if they don't need our advice, and this is coming from the heart, and they're actually stepping out and speaking to us to ask our feelings and emotions, I, I think that's like something that stands out. And I think that that's something that will never change. And again, my name is Nikia. I'm representing the Woodside Houses, and I'm a community advocate. I give back to my community. I look out for the people within my community. I'm willing to speak on the fours and the against so that we can meet in the middle, because I think this is something that we need. The proposed development would include over three hundred and seventy-five dwelling units, of which a hundred will be permanently affordable units. That means that everyone has an opportunity to have affordable housing. This is, this is unique. Additionally, this would change, like, it would allow for several new commercial locations to be open, which will provide new job opportunities for those in the community. This zoning change will really, really, really beautify the section of Thirty First Street corridor that has been undeveloped and somewhat neglected over the years. This portion of Thirty First Street, as opposed to other portions of Thirty First Street, is much, much, much less active and could definitely use a facelift. The current dark and dangerous street will be reactivated into a place of life and resilience. I support the proposed rezoning, and I ask for everyone's support that we meet in the middle and that we come to an agreement because we can all benefit from this. Thank you in advance for your consideration, and just thank you for your time. That is all.
Thank you very much, Nikia. Vanessa, we'll call the next person.
Next, we have Laura Picco.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Good morning to the Borough President and all others on this cloud. The proposed rezoning for development on Thirty First Street and White Avenue is yet another a pet that every is beneficial for Astoria. As someone who lives directly behind the proposed rezoning, I am outraged. We have the Astoria that we're all familiar with, with green streets, human-scale buildings, and a community of neighbors. And then we have the Astoria full of ten and twelve-story glass towers blocking out light to their small neighbors below, with people moving in and out, and developers placing profits before the integrity of the neighborhood while living tax-free. This project is built to reinvigorate the area, but if you are from this exact area, you will know it is in fact quite vigorously. I walk down Thirty First Street in White Bailey, and it is far from desolate. What do we like about Astoria, and how do we work to preserve that? Is it large developments and anonymity? Is the developer here to make Astoria, to make sure Astoria retains the people-focused, human-scaled, green streets and quality of light that we have always had? Or are these projects here to pack more and more people into our trains, pack out and overflow our sewer system into the East River, pack out our schools, exhaust our energy grid, our parks, and overburden our infrastructure? We can't be pretending that these sham affordable housing developments are either affordable or beneficial for Astoria. How can we continue to pack out the neighborhood without any changes to infrastructure, knowing fully well that the environment cannot handle it? This is almost criminal. Please honestly ask yourself, what true value does this project add to the people who live in Astoria? What real value does this rezoning bring to our neighborhood? Or does this specific rezoning only value the developer? Does this scale even match what's around it? Can we add to the community while not destroying the character of the community? Can we deliver much-needed services while still respecting the integrity of the area? We can. A resounding yes. We can have HANNIC daycare centers and shops without the rezone. This is not a this or that. It can be both, and we should demand both. Please ask yourself again, who benefits from this rezoning? As someone who would be directly affected by these zoning laws, who lives on Thirty Second Street and who does not own a home here, I ask you to please vote for Astoria and against this zoning change. We can develop without creating tax-abated megastructures in residential areas. We cannot continue to dump eight, ten, and twelve-story buildings into two- and three-story residential areas. You will not listen to the residents of Astoria who will be directly impacted, then who will listen to us? This rezoning and subsequent development will have a negative impact on hundreds of homes for years to come in this community. The residents have overwhelmingly come out against this rezoning, including signing a petition garnering hundreds of signatures from locals. The developer also created a petition, where out of four hundred signatures, even a small handful lived in Astoria, let alone the state. This is the future of Astoria that we're looking at. And as a resident, I am telling you that this rezoning will destroy the area. Please vote no to this rezoning, just as the community board resumed it twenty-five to four just a few days ago, and vote yes to representing the interests of the community, the people that actually live here, who are here today. And there is no need to rezone in order for Astoria to move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you for your testimony. We'll go on to the next person.
Next, we have Annie Cotton Morris.
Annie, please unmute.
Annie?
Hello? Hello? Yes, this is Nikia George. I'm reading on behalf of Ms. Cotton.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies. I hope everyone is doing well again. At this time, I'm speaking to express how I feel in regards to the proposed zoning map amendment and zoning tax amendment to facilitate new mixed-use developments on Thirty First Street in Community District One, Queens. The proposed developments would definitely include the three hundred and seventy-five dwellings, in which of these units they would have the, for the one hundred new affordable housing units. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time. The proposed developments would include over three hundred and seventy-five dwelling units, of which a hundred will be permanently affordable units. And for the new one hundred units, affordable housing units, rent will be significantly less than the market rates for comparable units. I'm speaking to show my support, and at this time, that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
I'm speaking to show my support, and at this time, that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Nikia for reading on behalf of Annie. We'll go to the next person.
Next is Nahid Afroz.
Nahid?
They're not in the room.
Okay, we'll go on to the next person.
Okay, next, we have Claudia Kohler.
Claudia, now? Yes, my name is Claudia Kohler. And I do give honor to the Queensborough President and all of you. And I take a great pleasure this morning to speak. My name is Claudia Kohler, and I am a resident of Astoria for more than sixty years, which is Astoria Houses, which sits on the peninsula. And I'm the president of that for the second time. I'm a tireless advocate for social welfare, education, and tennis rights in the Astoria community. I'm an advocate for my community. I speak today in support of the Thirty First Street rezoning, as it will provide our residents with new facilities and resources, including a youth and senior center. The youth center will provide much-needed space for recreation and connect the community at large. The developer has supported our family day for Astoria Houses and also have proposed to work with HANNIC to create programming that serves Astoria needs. And job opportunities are open to the community at large. I support them completely because it's a much-needed for the Astoria Northwestern, Northwestern Queens to come together and to be our supportive to the population that we have in our youth going forward, so that our community will stand and be a great community as it's been for many years. Please accept this testimony and my support for the rezoning. Thank you for your time and consideration in this important request.
Thank you, Claudia. We'll go to the next person.
Next is Stephen Chalivas.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
All right. So first off, I want to say that I represent a lot of the, the older residents that live on Thirty Second Street. You know, right now, the only people that are basically like vouching for this project live in Ravenswood and are not affected by this directly. I want to say that the community board has like resoundly rejected this twenty-four to four or twenty-four to five the other day. All right, there are many, many like concerns that the property owners here, most of which can't get on Zoom because, like I said, they're of, they're elders, you know, like which I have to gather in my house to actually have any sort of, you know, you know, communication with regards to the community board. You know, the structural integrity, the foundations, the utilities, you know, like these are terracotta pipes that like our pipes burst last week, you know, like the backyards. It, it's, it's very, you know, damaging. And, you know, there is no one in this neighborhood that is actually supportive of this. So people that are coming out and saying, like, in terms of the immediate community, no one is supportive of this. All right, it like the community board voted twenty-four to four against this. So, you know, right now, you know, people coming out and, and, and saying to the, you know, the broader audience that, you know, this is something that's great for the community is just not right. You know, the traffic along Thirty First Street, Twenty Fourth Road access, you know, noise, dust, air pollution. This is going to be a hell for the community on Thirty Second Street. And, you know, there's, there's a hypocrisy when you're building a senior center. But at the same time, you have octogenarians that are like panicked selling their homes because of this project. So if you're trying to actually like make the community better for seniors, but you have like the entire block of seniors in a panic, selling their houses, and go down Thirty Second Street, and you'll see the for-sale signs in front of their homes. You know, it, it's, 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 it's very hypocritical. All right. But there's, there's also one other person that wants to speak, my wife, Anna.
We'll ask for her to register.
I couldn't register. I wasn't able to register, so I, I, I'm really just trying to do this here. I called your.
We'll write your name down, and we'll continue with the queue in the order we have. And Stephen, please put her name in the chat to us, and we'll put it in the proper order. We want to respect everyone who did register. Vanessa, please call the next person.
Yes, hi, it's Ryan. Next is Corinne Haynes.
How are you today?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing great. I do appreciate you asking.
Can we you Claudia Kohler, please?
The opportunity to get fully protected from break-in for the security system?
Hi, good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, Corinne, we can hear you.
Good morning, Queensborough President and all my constituents on this morning. I am Corinne Haynes, and I am a resident of Queensbridge Houses for over fifty years. Like many residents in public housing, the idea of new housing is definitely music to my ears because the opportunity to not live in substandard conditions is pleasing. I live in a community that's grossly underserved. I know that affordable units will be made available by lottery, but it also gives me great hope that some of us will be able to come out of NITRA, hopefully, and live in, to live in a, a higher quality of housing. So yes, I am in favor of the Thirty First Street rezoning because it'll bring much-needed affordable housing to Western Queens. We have a lot of displaced residents living in our community. I don't know if anybody's looked lately, but the need for affordable housing, the opportunity to qualify for affordable housing is much needed. And as an advocate for my community, I'm always looking for projects that'll bring true affordable options to residents like myself. New affordable housing in Western Queens, again, is definitely needed. We need better, and we deserve better. And I'm speaking of, and on behalf of NITRA residents, which I don't often hear the Astoria residents speak of or even consider. The Community District One, we, preference will ensure the local residents to have the affordable apartments in the new building. I strongly believe that this project is a step in the right direction toward housing opportunities and reliable nonprofit partners like HANNIC. I fully support this project and ask that you do the same. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Corinne. We're gonna go to the next person.
Next is Bishop Mitchell Taylor.
Bishop Taylor?
Please unmute.
Oh, okay. I'm talking and no one can hear me.
Now we do.
Thank you so much. All right, I am, I'm, I'm just tuning in, first of all, to say that April Simpson, the president of the Queensbridge Tenant Association. The letter was supposed to be read by Corinne Haynes, who is the vice president of the Queensbridge Tenant Association, because Ms. April Simpson fell sick this, well, last night and sick this morning. The letter was submitted already, but I just wanted to say that she has chimed in in support of the project, particularly because of the senior programming and the youth programming that HANNIC will be providing and the job training and placement that'll be done by Urban Upbound and other partners. So I just wanted to chime in for her because I knew that she could not make the meeting, and Corinne didn't read her letter. So thank you so much.
Thank you for that, Bishop Taylor. We'll go to the next person.
Next is Renzo Ramirez.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, cool. Good morning, Borough President Richards. My name is Renzo Ramirez, and I am a member of thirty-two BJ SEIU here on behalf of the more than eighty-five thousand thirty-two BJ members to express our strong support for this project. The Developers MDM Development Group have applied to build three new eleven- and fourteen-story mixed-used buildings that will include residential, commercial, and community space. We are pleased to announce that the developer has reached out early to make a credible commitment to provide prevailing wage jobs to the future building service workers at the site. We estimate that this zoning will allow for the creation of new property service jobs and seventy-two new affordable units. These jobs are typically filled by local members of the community, and because of this commitment, will pay families sustaining wages, which help bring working families into the middle class. These apartments are needed for working people in Queens. This commitment to good prevailing wage jobs will give opportunity for upward mobility, security, and dignity to working-class families. Thirty-two BJ supports responsible developers who invest in the communities where they build. We know that this development will continue to uphold the, uphold the industry standard and provide opportunities for working families to thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Renzo. And we'll call the next person.
Next is Gilbert Pickett.
Good morning to the Queensborough President and the staff, and to all who are on the line. I am Pastor Gilbert Pickett, a pastor to the Mount Heart Baptist Church in Corona, Queens. I am a product of Corona East Elmhurst lifelong. I have many constituents of our church, many families who live in the Western Queens area and the Northern Queens area, who are definitely in need of the affordable housing that this rezoning project has to offer. And on top of the affordable housing piece, the mere fact that there is a possibility for a senior center, a youth center, a pre-K program. This is a much-needed project in the community. Do you understand what homeowners are speaking of? But the homes in Astoria definitely are priced to stay, meaning that they are not inexpensive homes, and they will not go downward in terms of their value with this project going up. It is a dark and a dismal and an unsafe area. These buildings will brighten it up, make it safe. And again, you know, the affordability of, of the housing there is much-needed when you have individuals who unfortunately are moving out of New York, moving out of Queens. And we need to keep these quality individuals and model citizens in our community. So on behalf of the Mount Heart Baptist Church and the Eastern Baptists Association, which I am the media pass moderator, we have a hundred and twenty churches throughout our circle. We are in support of this project that is much-needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We'll call the next person.
Next, we have Hassan Clark. Please unmute.
Good morning, good morning.
Hassan.
Good morning, good morning to the Borough President, Mr. Richards. Good morning to Mr. Joseph, Mr. Poy. My name is Reverend Hassan Clark, and I am the Senior Associate Pastor at the Center of Hope International located in Long Island City. Thank you for allowing me to speak today in support, in support of the Thirty First Street rezoning. As someone who works so closely with public housing residents, I see firsthand the disregard and disinvestment in our community. I see this project as an opportunity to positively impact our neighborhood and uplift those who reside here. This project will not only provide new job opportunities and a hundred-plus affordable housing units, but it will also include space for a new senior center. The senior center can afford a wide variety of services ranging from nutrition and wellness programs to social and recreational activities. I believe this new senior center is a much-needed addition to our community, especially as we recover from the pandemic. It is incredibly important to provide a sense of inclusion in the community for our seniors, and we continue to navigate through this tough time and isolating times. For this reason, I kindly request you to consider this project for approval. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. We'll call up the next person.
Next, we have Bobby Moore.
Bobby? Please unmute yourself.
Yes, I did. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you so much for having me. I want to say thank you, Borough President, for allowing me to speak on today. I am Reverend Dr. Bobby Moore, the overseer of the Astoria Baptist Church located at Thirty-One Seventeen Twenty First Street, Long Island City, New York. I've served there for over twenty years, and I would like to express my unwavering support for the Thirty First Street rezoning. I am in favor of this rezoning because I believe it will support local employment. I believe it will boost our local economy. This project will provide construction jobs that will be available to the community and permanent building services jobs. The developers have committed to working with Urban Upbound to ensure local hiring and fill the various positions with residents living in our existing community. Additionally, the developers will provide Urban Upbound with space and resources to do local job training and placement. They are also committed to using MWBE suppliers as contractors, subcontractors throughout the construction phase. And once the project is completed, the developers have committed to work with HANNIC to build a youth and senior center and fund inter, excuse me, intergenerational programming. Please support the request for rezoning this property to accommodate this new development. I want to thank you in advance for your support in this matter, and may God bless you all.
Thank you, Bobby. We'll call the next person.
Next, we have Ada Panegvaneva.
I, I, I think we have no choice but to.
Well, Ada? Ada, can you unmute? I know you're using Stephen's line. I think we have to unmute. I think we muted them by accident.
Hi there. Thank you for the time. So first off, I want to say that it's a little bit unraveling that so many people that are speaking today either don't live directly close to where this is happening and were not at any of the community board meetings or presentations where the developers did a special presentations to the, to the neighbors that are directly affected by this. The other thing I want to say is, in one of these meetings, the developers said that they were going to respond to all of our questions. And this happened maybe like one or two weeks ago. They sent over a response with twenty-plus pages that was very threatening. And these were received fifteen minutes before the community board meeting on Tuesday. So the goodwill from the developers is not apparent towards the neighbors right now. And it's more of like, oh, well, we have as-of-right construction. You either take it or leave it. So I would want to say that this is affecting the neighbors that are neighboring these structures that they want to put up, like in, in many different ways. The first one is, we live on a dead-end road on Thirty Second Street. Our only access to this road is, is through Twenty Fourth Road. We don't know what the developers plan to do in order for us to retain access. This is going to increase traffic, parking, access to in and out, and this is a dead-end block. How is this going to affect our privacy as well as any crime? Crime has been going up here a lot. There's graffiti here that wasn't here before, and fistfights and all these things that. that I don't know how the Queensborough President or his staff is addressing, like to help the neighbors that are here. The other thing is on construction, this is going to affect our backyards, our well-being. There's going to be sanitation concerns in terms of rodents, pests, dumpsters that they're going to put for any commercial property building that is going to affect us directly. And at the end of the day, like all this construction, all this noise, all these huge buildings that they're trying to put up, is this really just trying to make Astoria the new Long Island City that is kicking out the original inhabitants of Astoria and changing the true nature of Astoria? Like, I would really like for the Queensborough President and the staff to consider that on how it's going to impact the current residents. The other thing is tax abatements. The developers are looking for this rezoning in order for them to get tax abatements and they're pushing on community programs as well as affordable housing. I just want to say the affordable housing that they're doing is or proposing is minimal in comparison to the amount that these, amount of apartments that these buildings are going to have. And they did mention in the community board meeting that the community programs are subject to city funding. So how is this benefiting our community when we're paying all these property taxes and the developers are getting all these tax breaks?
Miss Panay, I want your three minutes up.
Okay. Well, I hope the community Borough President, Queensborough President considers how this is affecting our neighbors and the well-being of all the elderly people that are actually needing to move out of here to avoid all these hardships. Thank you.
Thank you, Ada. I have a question. You mentioned a concern that you wanted to know how our office was addressing. Can you reiterate the specific issue within the community that you wanted to know what our office was working on?
Yes, I just think that it's very difficult to join these meetings. Like, I didn't know about this meeting until today and to be part of the list. And listen, like, I work on Zoom and on computers every day, but most of our neighbors are in their seventies or eighties and we have to go and like knock on their door. We have to like. And we have to go to like their doors and ask them to come over to our house. And we set them up with iPads and with like all these things so that they can talk, but they can't do this by themselves. So it is a little bit concerning that the people that are directly affected by this because we, our backyards are the wall of staples. And these are people that are in their eighties that don't know how to use Zoom, that are requesting the community board and other people to help us, to help them and like, to help them have like these meetings in person. Like, what they're saying is if kids are going back to school, why can't we have these meetings in person where we can actually go and represent ourselves? So they.
I definitely understand. I mean, you know, the governor amended the open meetings law because of the pandemic. It was, you know, certain things happened. These are things that we'll be exploring. And we do understand that it's difficult for certain people who may not be as tech savvy or may not have access to attend. This is why we also record and put on YouTube and allow people to also reach out to us afterwards. But we are working diligently to ensure that we continue to make it as accessible as possible to everyone. And that's something we will continue to address and hopefully we can work with you on that.
Thank you. Also. I just want to say one last thing. I'm sorry. And I didn't want to bring this up, but I don't know if you guys are familiar with who Luis Alvarez is. He was a first responder during nine eleven. He was the one that went on Jon Stewart and went on all these like press tours like in DC to get help from the government towards the first responders because they weren't getting any help for any of their, of the side effects. And so his parents live on our street, on Thirty-second Street and Twenty-fourth Road. He grew up there and we met with his parents as we were like going door-to-door, talking to our neighbors. And they told us that they unfortunately had to move because his father was not going to be able to survive this construction project. Like the dirt, the noise, the, all the sanitation concerns. So this is something that really is affecting our elderly community that we should actually be taking care of. And especially if it's somebody who's the parent of one of our first responders that was directly affected in nine eleven.
Also, I'd like to point out that video Zoom attending the public hearing in person are not the only options. We also accept written testimony. So going forward, the next steps are the City Planning Commission and City Council. So for those who cannot either attend the meeting or do a Zoom meeting, they certainly can provide written testimony to each of the reviewing agencies.
Okay, thank you. Could you put that information on the text, on the chat so that we can distribute that to our neighbors?
Yes, we'll do that and then we'll also move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Next is Nahid Afroz on the line.
If the line ended in three-three-nine, can you mute and let us know if it's Nahid? Please do so.
I think you have to press star eight four if I'm not mistaken to unmute on phone.
I've also heard star six to unmute on the phone.
Yes, if you're on the phone, if you press star six. If not, we'll move to the next person. Okay, we'll move to the next person. But whoever's on the phone, please do remember you can also submit written testimony. Sorry if we haven't been able to get to you due to technical difficulties.
The next person registered to speak is Crowe and Mason.
They're not in the room.
And then the next and last person registered to speak is Reverend Young.
Reverend Young?
Also not in the room.
Okay. Is the person on the phone, we'll try one more time. The person who's on the phone, phone ending in three-three-nine, if you press star six to unmute yourself, we can hear you. No? Okay, all right, Irving?
Um, I really didn't have any further questions. I did want the presenter, the applicant to come back and just respond to the question about the response to the civic association after the meeting.
Sure. Actually, Irving, this is Steve Sinekory. I'll take that question. The, the meeting that was facilitated with the community board, with the Thirty-second Street Association was facilitated by the community board. So we submitted the response to the questions that were given, that were provided to us. We were direct, we were directed to provide it to the community board. So there was a miscommunication. We, we, we were under the false impression that the community board was giving, you know, providing our responses directly to the Thirty-second Street Association. When we realized, we were informed by the community board that that was not the case, then we, then we sent them over. But we did provide it to the community board in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we, that's it for members of the public. And so because of that, we'll move on to our next, the next one on the item, which is number nine. Vanessa, feel free to call them up.
Calendar number nine, ULC number N two-one-zero-four-three-four Z R Y. Open Restaurants Program Zoning Text Amendment. This is citywide.
Hey, good morning. Thank you so much for hosting the Department of City Planning and the Department of Transportation at this land use hearing. I'm Alexis Wheeler. I'm the Director of City Planning, Queens Office. I also wanted to thank the Borough President's Office again for ongoing consideration of the numerous citywide actions that have been coming before you. Your whole team has been managing this complex process very effectively. As our city continues to recover and our communities look to heal and build back stronger, the city's been looking for opportunities to update our zoning resolution, especially to remove barriers for operations of our broad array of Queens businesses. Restaurants and small businesses are core to the identity of Queens. You can go to any neighborhood to eat world-class diverse cuisines. But unfortunately, you can also see a lot of empty storefronts and the vestiges of businesses that just couldn't sustain through these unprecedented times. So the proposed zoning text amendment will really seek to cut red tape, expand eligibility, and streamline the process for restaurants to expand into the sidewalk so they can serve meals and drinks to New Yorkers while safely conducting their business. This zoning text amendment is a joint proposal from the Department of City Planning and the Department of Transportation. We're joined today by Benjamin Huff, a senior planner in DCP's Transportation Division, and Al Silvestri, the Queens Deputy Borough Commissioner for DOT. And so today, the team will be presenting on the zoning text, which is before you to contemplate. In addition to DOT outlining the larger program controlling the public realm that this will be a part of. So at that, I will pass this off to Al. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Alexis. Can, can everyone hear me? And can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, so thank you very much for having us and thank you for the kickoff. Alexis, oh, I see. Great. Thank you, Teal, for, for sharing your screen. I had mine queued up just in case. So for the next ten minutes or so, I'll be taking us through where, where we started with the Open Restaurants Program and ultimately where we're going. As Alexis mentioned, this was an emergency program and we saw tremendous benefit citywide to how it activated our streets, how it really helped a floundering restaurant business that was distinctly impacted by COVID. And from DOT's perspective, activating the streets and, you know, working within the public right-of-way is why this is going to ultimately be under DOT supervision. So Teal, if you could, the next slide. So the permanent, the permanent program will be a new program under DOT that will include both the sidewalk and the roadway cafe components. This was under the emergency program implemented, the roadway section was, was a bit different, something new to, to the city streets. And ultimately, what we want to do is we want to balance all the needs of the street and the sidewalk. There's a lot of competition for curb space and we want to take what worked under the pre-existing sidewalk cafe program and the emergency program. And over the course of the next year, develop rules in conjunction with all the stakeholders, elected officials, community boards, civic organizations, to really build a permanent program that works for everyone. So I just want to make it clear here in the public forum that while this presentation will cover both the sidewalk and roadway dining, DOT and city planning are really specifically asking for the opinion on changing the specific sidewalk cafe text amendment. And that is the first step in really building out the permanent program. Okay? Next slide. So as you know, the city had street and sidewalk cafes before COVID, but far fewer of them. The majority of the program was administered by the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, formerly known as DCA, Consumer Affairs. And DOT did run a small pilot of public roadway seating known as the Street Seats Program. You could see that all the way on the right-hand side of this slide. But the numbers were far less than ultimately what we, we saw during the height of the pandemic and the emergency program. Go to the next slide. So during COVID, New York City suspended the existing rules through an emergency executive order. And DOT was directed to create an open restaurants program, allowing restaurants to conduct business in the public right-of-way. So restaurants were allowed to serve diners outdoors due to restrictions on, on indoor dining. And, you know, by most estimates, this helped save about eleven thousand restaurants that took part in the program. And he associated a hundred thousand jobs, which is a pretty conservative estimate, by allowing them to serve in the roadway, sidewalk, or both. So one thing of note, it was a lifeline throughout the pandemic, you know, for restaurants who just could not have people inside. And the emergency program did not require a participation fee. And with the, the emergency program, it was a self-certification. As long as you had a Department of Health operating license, you were able to apply to the program. And then your setup was inspected by, by city agencies in those early days. If we can go through the next slide. So like I said, we want to build on the successes of the program in, in the permanent setup. And we want to really address the challenges that we saw early on throughout the emergency. So the successes, all areas of the city being eligible, that's a key component. There's something really beneficial to having every restaurant with ground floor access able to have this program accessible to them. We want to encourage participation. We want the activation of the street. And with the addition of the roadway seating, there are more options for restaurants. Restaurants that perhaps had too narrow of a sidewalk or there was some type of conflicting barrier on the sidewalk, the roadway seating just opens up another, another option for them. So as far as challenges go, in the early days, there, there were several. The clarity and consistency of the rules did go through a few different iterations as we were kind of working through the, the early days of the pandemic. One thing in particular, we, we sought to really maintain emergency vehicle access and make sure that signage was not blocked. One thing that we've seen, and I'll be upfront about it, is the, is the, the construction of the, the classic plywood shack that does not allow for visibility. It oftentimes blocks sightlines for drivers, for pedestrians, and also signage in particular. So that's something we're, we're looking to address in, in the permanent program. And, you know, early on, we were, we were looking to balance enforcement with the recovery. It was, it was an education-focused program where we were working closely with restaurants to make sure that they were complying, that their setups were safe, and that we were balancing in the, the long-term interests of the, of the restaurant with everyone else that, that uses the sidewalk and the street. Let's, let's move to the next slide. So as we, as we got through that process, thousands of restaurants self-certified to join the program. Even though we did have challenges, the, the program really was a very strong success. And the mayor announced in September of last year that the Open Restaurants Program would be permanent. In October of last year, the City Council voted to establish a permanent outdoor program, forty-eight-four, two against, one abstention. And to build out that permanent program, it requires a series of, of legal changes. And the first, and that's what we're here today at, at the public forum to discuss, is changing the text amendment that would allow more areas of the city to be eligible for the roadway and sidewalk seating component and for DOT to have the entire program under its umbrella. So the, the permanent program would retain the elements that we've seen, but work and modify the program so that it's frankly a, a bit stricter and really takes public safety and street safety in particular, because that's DOT's core mission, into, into major account. Next slide. So the, the vision for the permanent program, both the sidewalk and seating sections would be administered by DOT. As we go through the rulemaking process over the next year, there will be consistent inter-agency coordination on enforcement issues. We know this is a, of particular concern to many of. We know this is a, of particular concern to many of the community boards and also to the borough president. DOT will enforce the, the setups, the, the barriers on street and on sidewalk, the clear paths, the ADA compliance. And NYPD will continue to enforce noise. Sanitation will continue to enforce garbage and removal issues. So the permanent program, as I previously said, the idea would be that it be available throughout the city and have strict sidewalk, clear path and roadway siding criteria. Let's go. So speaking specifically of the sidewalk component, all restaurants with ground floor space would be eligible to apply for year-round access. The setup has to be ADA compliant. And there's a whole set of ADA compliance rules that, that will be part of the guidelines. And particularly the clear path regulations that require that the area, that, that a certain area be free of obstructions for pedestrians within the sidewalk. The permanent program would focus on, you know, removable tables, chairs and barriers, seating up against the building and setting up only within a restaurant's frontage. So under the emergency program, we did allow certain restaurants to extend in front of neighbors, provided that they got their approval. In the permanent program, we're looking to, to limit that solely in, in front of the actual physical building of a restaurant. Go to the next slide. So for the roadway component, the this, this picture really shows kind of the gold standard of what we'll be looking at for the design guidelines. The setups will be allowed citywide to park in, I'm sorry, to be in the parking lane, the curbside lane of the street, except in prohibited zones. So not in front of hydrants, not in no standing zones, not in bus stops. That's the, the same as what we currently have in, in, in the emergency program. And as I mentioned before, the visibility of traffic signs, access to hydrants. That's why this photo here kind of shows the gold standard. There's a visual connection for drivers, pedestrians and signage because the setup is, is open. It's not a structure. You can see through it. And really the, the base, the perimeter of the setup has the search, the sturdy barriers on all three sides. In this case, they're nice, you know, metal planters with, with some greenery that really provide a, a strong barrier within the, the actual setup, removable tables and chairs. Once again, just like the sidewalk setup and the setup being open to the sidewalk with accessible seating. So no fully enclosed structures that, that, that will be the, the defining idea behind the, the, the roadway guidelines for what restaurants can do under the permanent program. And the, the last point here is the, the emergency program was free. It was a, obviously a very difficult time and we wanted to incentivize, incentivize restaurants to, to be involved. In the permanent program, a, a fee structure is being proposed. And we, I know that the Borough President's Office has, has focused on, you know, what, what the fee structure will be. We don't have an answer yet on that, but the, we do, we have heard loud and clear from the Borough President, among others, that it not be so onerous that it push out restaurants from the program. We want to make sure that this is an accessible program to all restaurants and that the, the fee be appropriate based upon, upon that idea. Let's go to the next slide. Seasonality. So one of the issues that we had with the, the roadway setups was being in street and the, the challenges for city operational needs such as, you know, the big one being snow clearance. So that is why we're proposing that the, the roadway component of, of the permanent program be seasonal. So what does that look like? We're still determining exactly, but basically the winter months, you would have to remove your roadway setup based upon safety and operational considerations. And though there are options being explored for a potential waiver for certain restaurants in, in winter months, you know, I, I think one thing to note is that not every roadway setup is the same. Some of them are on extremely busy avenues that are, you know, primary snow clearance routes and some, some are, are not. And there, so that, that option is being explored in the, in the ultimate rulemaking process. Let's see, anything else on this one? Now that, that's it. Let's go to the next slide. So what do we see as far as the application and the administration of this permanent program? DOT is creating a, a unified office that will oversee both the sidewalk and roadway programs. There's actually a posting up right now. If you, if you look at newyorknyc.gov/jobs for a Director of Open Restaurants and a couple other support positions. So the agency is looking to staff up on this because there's going to, there's going to be administrative and enforcement needs as, you know, this is going to be a citywide program and we're going to need a, a team that is that is built to handle that, that citywide responsibility. The second point, to be clear, the permanent program will have more detailed upfront design guidance with detailed visuals so that restaurants know exactly what they can and cannot build. An improvement on the, on the previous sidewalk cafe program would be a streamlined application process with online filing, shorter review periods and ultimately a, a four-year license window. So a restaurant would apply, pay the, the fee for the program and then have a four-year license window with periodic compliance checks and the ability to find or remove bad actors from the program. That's, that's really key. And, and I'll take the time now to say that, you know, under the emergency program, a lot of restaurants took part in this because it was the only option. Our hope is that by the time that, that the permanent program goes into effect sometime in 2023, that we'll be back to a new normal and restaurants can return to primarily being indoors, utilizing their space. And that we, though we want restaurants certainly to take advantage of this program, we also don't think that we'll see as many as we did at the height of COVID. So those restaurants taking advantage of this, you know, with the, the fee, with the, the four-year license being an investment for a restaurant. You know, we think that all of many of the, the bad actors would, would get kind of sifted out in that, in that way. Let's go to the next slide. So there are three main actions needed to facilitate the future program. So one, that's why we're here today is that text amendment and updating that to remove the locational prohibitions. And that would allow all geographies within New York City and, and my colleagues from city planning could discuss that more in depth. It would grandfather existing enclosed sidewalk cafes, but it would essentially remove the locational prohibitions and then allow the city to, step two, enter into a local law and Kappa process. Kappa stands for, give me a second, City Administrative Procedure Act, which would allow DOT to kind of build out the rulemaking of the permanent program and revise those design requirements to ensure it's, it's a program that, that works for everybody and it's something that we could all be proud of. And that, you know, kind of leads directly into the creation of a permanent roadway cafe program, which is, is something new that we haven't seen you know, since, certainly since the pandemic. Let's go to the next. So we are at the beginning of this process. As you can see here, you know, the orange bar shows that the emergency program will be in effect throughout this year, throughout 2022, and we anticipate the the permanent program to begin probably sometime in, in, in early 2023 with the application process starting a bit before that. So, you know, we, we have received the, the question, you know, why now? Why are you, you know, moving so quickly on this? And, and the, the short answer is it's, it's at the very beginning of that legal process that will allow us the next year to build out the groundwork for the permanent program. You know, we, we do anticipate going through that lengthy rulemaking Kappa process, which requires public feedback and, and public forums so that community boards, elected officials, civics, other stakeholders can, can really weigh in on, on what the best way forward for the sidewalk and roadway components are. Okay. I think that's it. Okay. So I guess in, in conclusion, you know, we are still recovering from, from the pandemic. As you could see, I'm in the office right now. A shared office and I'm, I, I am wearing a mask in compliance with, with city, city rules. And, you know, the, the silver lining in many ways of, of, of COVID-19 was the re-envisioning of our, of our street space and our public space. And the open restaurants program was a, was a big part of that. You know, it was, it was really refreshing to see people outside and dining and talking and, and doing so in a safe manner. When we, you know, we're in our darkest days. So DOT welcomes public input. NYC.govopenrestaurants, there's a direct forum where you could write to the Queens office, you could write to our commissioner. And we look forward to a collaborative process where we could build on a program that we can all be proud of. Okay. And I will kick it over to my colleagues at DCP.
All right. Thanks. Thank you, Al. So hello, everybody. My name is Ben Huff. I'm a senior project manager at City Planning in the Transportation Division. And I'm going to now kind of shift the focus of this presentation to the, the text amendment, the zoning text amendment before, that's in public review. Next slide. So as we talked about, there's, there's three main actions to facilitate the future permanent open restaurants program. And right now we're focusing on the zoning text amendment. So unnecessary zoning restrictions stand in the way of thousands of restaurants from potentially participating in outdoor dining past the emergency. So this zoning proposal is key to unlocking the full citywide applicability and consolidating control and accountability for the program under the Department of Transportation. Next slide. So the proposed text amendment will remove the entirety of Article One, Chapter Four of the zoning resolution and related texts in special districts and other areas that relate to sidewalk cafes to fully remove zoning from dictating the location of sidewalk cafes. This will allow any restaurant to apply to DOT for a sidewalk as long as they can also meet the required clear path and siding criteria. So the, the rules of like what a sidewalk cafe will have to do will still exist in, in admin code rules and, and DOT rules, but there won't be zoning as an additional block on who and who cannot get a cafe. Next slide. So a bit of context, in March of 2020, pre-COVID, there were roughly 27,000 restaurants in the five boroughs. Twenty-two percent of these were located in Queens and that's about 6,000. So these restaurants range from small neighborhood cafes to mid-size, high-end dining establishments to multi-level catering halls for large events. For the purpose of this presentation and, and what the text amendment is focused on are ground floor restaurants with access to the street as it's these restaurants that have the ability to apply for a sidewalk cafe. Next slide. So sidewalk cafes have long been a part of the New York City streetscape and with them, the laws governing cafes have evolved over the years. When U-Lerp came into the existence in the late 1970s, each cafe approval was subjected to a full U-Lerp review as part of its revocable consent to use street space. So every time a restaurant wanted a sidewalk cafe, they would have been required to go through a full U-Lerp nine-month sort of process. And this was recognized that this level of review was onerous, time-consuming and difficult to manage for these restaurants. So in 1980, the commission put into place a framework attempting to streamline that process by naming areas of the city where sidewalk cafes were allowed. Since then, the program has been amended dozens of times to make more and more fine grain distinctions on where and what kind of cafes are allowed in different areas. And up until COVID-19 and sort of the launch of the temporary program, zoning worked as a gatekeeper of where sidewalk cafes could exist. Next slide. So under zoning rules, there are three different kinds of cafes and where in the city they can be located. So most commonly are unenclosed cafes, which allow for readily removable tables, chairs and fencing, no allowable overhead coverage other than umbrellas or retractable roofs. Next were small sidewalk cafes, which are essentially unenclosed sidewalk cafes that contain no more than a single row of tables and chairs adjacent to the street line and can extend no further than four and a half feet from the building. So these were zoned in areas that had sort of higher pedestrian volumes, think central business districts. So allow the flexibility for a restaurant to have a cafe, but really maintain the bulk of the street first for pedestrian flow. Third are enclosed cafes, which are really defined as extensions of the building into the sidewalk using light building material and requiring 50% transparency on the walls. These are kind of extended, yeah, buildings extending into the sidewalk and enclosing and expanding the restaurant indoors. Next slide. So zoning held the geographic restrictions on where these types of cafes were allowed. And the public could view where these cafes are allowed on city planning, zoning and land use map or ZOLA application. So yellow, which you can kind of see in midtown, those, that's where only small cafe types were allowed. Purple are areas where either unenclosed or small cafes were allowed, but it prohibited enclosed cafes and green, which is sort of the majority of the area where cafes were allowed, allowed all types of cafes. Importantly, you can also see a lot of areas where cafes were not allowed to participate or restaurants were not allowed to participate in the sidewalk cafe program, even if sidewalks were wide or conditions otherwise would have allowed it. So red are areas where zoning specifically prohibited from having cafes. And blue is the residential areas of the cafe, residential areas of the city. Next slide. So in March of 2020, the existing DCWP, DCWP program had 1,224 sidewalk cafes actively licensed citywide, mostly unenclosed and the vast majority of which were located in Manhattan. Next slide. So we sort of went over, you know, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the New York state economy went on pause. And basically, you know, we, we put a ban on indoor dining where businesses weren't allowed to, you know, continue to operate. And this had a drastic effect on employment and, and how long these restaurants could survive. Not many of them are really, you know, sort of structured in a way that they can financially operate while going on breaks for weeks at a time. So we saw employment drop a lot, almost 64% from quarter one to quarter two in 2020. And we saw sadly that the city lost many longtime institutions in the past year. And, you know, there's still been lower overall employment in this industry, lower overall spending. Continued restrictions, but also aversions to indoor dining have made it very difficult for restaurants to operate. Next slide. So as we sort of went over earlier, you know, to provide support for this. So as we sort of went over earlier, you know, to provide support for this injury industry and move dining outdoors, we stood up the open restaurants program. I think the focus of that was really suspending zoning and certain admin code rules that would allow restaurants to work, sort of operate in the public right away, both combination of the sidewalk as well as the street. Next slide. We saw a lot of success in this program. Over an eleven and a half thousand restaurants participated. Last I checked, I think it's around 11,800. DOT has a a web portal that you can see where all these restaurants are. We saw a particular surge in outdoor dining in the outer boroughs that that really weren't participating in the pre-COVID program. And about 10,000 of these restaurants are are using the restaurant, using the sidewalk in some form. Next slide. We've seen the challenges that the New York City restaurant industry has faced from COVID-19 and open restaurants was really essential to them surviving the past year. An estimated 100,000 jobs has been saved by this program. And the industry still has a lot of challenges ahead, but open restaurants has been able to provide a twin benefit of both helping small businesses flourish while also making New York City streets and sidewalks some of the best outdoor dining sort of dining options in the world. It's a lot of popularity with restaurants, you know, tend to find that, you know, reservations on a nice night, a lot more reservations outside than indoors. And we also have, you know, currently in place in order to dine indoors, one has to be vaccinated, but but open restaurants allows unvaccinated individuals, those who haven't been able to get vaccinated to still kind of participate and and spend their money and and dine. Next slide. So during the emergency program, two and a half thousand restaurants were permitted in areas that would have been prohibited or limited under the existing zoning. And the proposed text amendment will allow them, as long as they can meet the citing criteria that's outlined by the Department of Transportation. So looking at the map on right, we we did some GIS analysis. So in red are restaurants that would have been specifically prohibited by the old zoning rules. So these include commercial mid-blocks, certain special districts, streets that also contain an elevated rail line or other named congested areas. In blue are sort of non-conforming restaurants in residential areas. Zoning doesn't allow restaurants in residential areas, but many of these restaurants sort of predate the zoning that exists. Perhaps the restaurants existed before the 1961 zoning. And so these restaurants have sort of remained in these residential districts and they would not have been allowed to participate in any outdoor dining whatsoever. So we estimate there's about, there were 2,900 of these non-conforming restaurants pre-COVID and 1,000 have been participating in the open restaurants program. And yellow are sort of those zones that we said would be limited to the small typology, small cafe only. Next slide. So there there are many reasons why these areas were prohibited in zoning. A lot of those reasons really are kind of lost to time. Because they go back some 50 years. But what we've seen during the temporary open restaurants program is that these cafes can work in many more locations than zoning contemplated. So this is a cafe in in Bushwick, Brooklyn, but very similar to restaurants or or commercial districts in Queens that have elevated rail lines. So we, you know, we have the elevated rail line, but they can have this little kind of cafe right outside the area. And so, you know, we think zoning is not working and that physical rules, citing criteria rules could work much better. Next slide. So Dumbo is a special district that specifically does not allow sidewalk cafes, but we've seen some great examples of restaurants doing outdoor dining during the emergency program. So this proposal will allow restaurants in special districts to apply as long as they meet the setting criteria. All special districts will be eligible. In Queens, both Long Island City and College Point are special districts that explicitly ban sidewalk cafes. But these, this zoning proposal would allow cafes to at least apply in the future program. Next slide. So the blocks around Grand Central are barred from having sidewalk cafes by zoning. And this restaurant here would not be allowed to participate under sort of the permanent open restaurants program. Central business districts will likely need to meet a 12-foot clear path, a larger clear path that's contemplated than sort of the rest of the city to account for, you know, increased pedestrian traffic. But restaurants will be allowed to participate, you know, they they'll be able to do something very small like this, like self-service tables just just outside with plenty of the streets still available for for traffic flow, pedestrian traffic flow. Next slide. So those are all examples of where zoning explicitly barred restaurants from participating. Another gap, as we mentioned, is restaurants in residential districts. So this is an example of a restaurant, a residential district that has really wide sidewalks. It could also, it's also in an area that doesn't have extremely heavy pedestrian flow. This is actually an example of a restaurant in Clinton Hill. So we do think that, you know, sidewalk cafes should be expanded to these rest, non-conforming restaurants in residential districts, as long as they have the appropriate sidewalk conditions. And and these restaurants will not be able to apply, even apply for a sidewalk cafe in the future program if this zoning text amendment doesn't pass. So they'll just be barred from outdoor dining entirely. Next slide. So also a note of consequence of removing sidewalk cafes from zoning is that we are collapsing the different types of cafes. So the distinction of only a small cafe zone will be removed, but this will work in conjunction with the supplemental clear path requirements that will address the need for wider pedestrian zones in the city's most trafficked locations. So that's that 12-foot clear path requirement. So that's how we're kind of shifting that. Next slide. And finally, the zoning, ending the zoning regulations on sidewalk cafes would also eliminate the enclosed cafe program that we had. So this program served a specific purpose pre-pandemic that was joint DCP and DOB review of sidewalk cafes with particular conditions. And sort of since we're expanding the option of of who can participate while also expanding the option of roadway dining, we don't really see the need for continuing these enclosed cafes and really permanent removal of the public right away. So we're really going to focus on enclosed cafes with readily removable tables, chairs and any any other sort of furniture that they have that will have more flexibility on the street than really expanding restaurants into the right of way. Since there were enclosed cafes that existed pre-pandemic that were licensed by the city, those restaurants will be grandfathered into the permanent program. There's about 102 licensed enclosed cafes. And those those will be grandfathered in and will still be allowed to continue to exist. So this restaurant you see here, they won't be forced to take down the structure. They'll be grandfathered in. Next slide. So other cleanup actions in the text amendment include removing definitions and cross references to cafes, removing text that precludes operable windows that service outdoor restaurants, ensuring that no enclosure provisions require a restaurant to be fully indoors as a condition of its zoning distance, and clarifying sidewalk widening text to ensure it does not conflict with the operation of the open restaurants program. Next slide. So zooming into Queens, this was the sort of sidewalk cafe regulations that existed pre-COVID and that are currently suspended. So Queens has rules that allow all cafes along many main commercial avenues of the borough. You can see those in green. But much of the borough did not allow cafes because of the abundance of pure residential zoning that we see here in blue. And then again, those two special districts that did not allow sidewalk cafes are Long Island City, sort of the red you see in the northwest corner, and College Point, just north of Flushing. Next slide. So the old process generated 150 cafes. So of those 1,224 cafes that existed pre-COVID, about 100, 150 existed in Queens. The majority of those 130 are unenclosed. There were only three small type cafes. And there were 17 enclosed cafes. So those 17 enclosed cafes, they will be grandfathered and and allowed to sort of continue. But the majority of what we saw was unenclosed cafes, and that's what we're really proposing in the permanent program. Next slide. So under the emergency open restaurants program, there's there's been 2,183 cafes in Queens. 254 of them would have been prohibited under current zoning. You can see those in red, those red dots, those are mostly sort of those commercial corridors along elevated rail lines. We have that photo, sort of that example again. So these restaurants are have been able to participate for the first time, and many of them took advantage of the program. Especially during the ban on indoor dining. And there's 191 cafes that are blue. So these are cafe, non-conforming restaurants that exist in residential districts that have been able to participate for the first time as well. So all of these restaurants, we're we're not saying they for sure will be able to exist in the permanent program. They'll have to meet the clear path requirements and other citing criteria. But the consequence of this zoning text amendment is that they will at least be allowed to apply to participate in the future program. Zoning alone won't just be, you know, be this barrier that will simply remove them from the program. Next slide. So as Al mentioned, you know, we're still really at the start of this multi-pronged legislative process for rolling out a permanent open restaurants program. The zoning text that we are reviewing today was referred out on June 17th. It was referred to 59 community boards and five borough presidents. We're sort of at the end of that review process now. So we've we've done many, many meetings with the community boards, almost pretty much all community boards opted to hear this text amendment. So we've been working sort of overtime, getting our teams out there and showing them this presentation and personalizing it for for each community board. We expect this text now to come back to the CPC for a hearing and a vote sort of in this year. As Al mentioned, we don't really expect the full program launch till early 2023. So, you know, during that time, before that time, we will also be coming back to focus on updating the sidewalk cafe regulations as well as sort of the authorization of the the permanent authorization of the roadway program. And you know, again, the full program launch ended 2022, start of early 2023, which will allow for these restaurants to sort of transition to the the permanent open restaurant rules. Next slide. So that's our presentation today on the open restaurants text amendment, permanent open restaurants program. And my colleagues and I are happy to take any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Al, and also thank you, Ben. Definitely appreciate it. Yeah, one, I have a few questions, and I know Irving has some as well. What I ask to start is when you start talking about the new fee structure that you're exploring, help me understand if there are restaurants that already have these existing structures that were improved through the emergency open system initiative that was put forth, will will those restaurants or those businesses have to then apply again through this new method and then would have to do, would have to pay as well?
Correct. They'll they'll have to reapply for the permanent program and they will have to bring their current setups into full compliance with the the updated citing guidelines. So that's why, you know, we're we're giving this a lot of lead time and the rulemaking process, there's going to be an outreach component to that so that all restaurants who are in the program know, you know, and and just to be honest, it's not going to come as a surprise to many of them that they need to bring their current setups into into full compliance. And as far as the fee goes, I I know, I know Irving has has asked this and the Borough President has asked this. You know, we're we are focused on making sure that it's not too onerous and that every restaurant is able to to take part in this and that no one is pushed out. There are reviews taking place right now within within DOT collaboratively with our with our other sister agencies to try to figure out the the appropriate sweet spot for for that fee structure.
And and if I could just add a little bit, you know, we we didn't go too much in the pre-COVID program, but fees did exist in the sidewalk cafe program pre-COVID. The way the fee was structured, there were two zones. It was south of 96th Street in Manhattan and then basically everywhere else in the city and was focused on the amount of square footage that the restaurant was sort of applying to take over. That's sort of how the fee structured before. It was really just these two zones, but you know, the fee is very important as part of the revocable consent kind of contract between the restaurant and using the public right of way. But yeah, by updating this program, we are hoping to kind of rethink that free structure to make it more equitable and make sure that restaurants, you know, in the outer boroughs could can continue to operate since we saw really the majority of them were in Manhattan before. So we this should be an opportunity that, you know, will make it more accessible to Bronx Queens, Brooklyn, Staten Island, which which didn't have as many in the previous program.
And are you able to share any preliminary preliminary metrics that you that you would consider for the new fee structure? As you said, Ben, before it was a, you were looking at it based on my square footage. And there were two really main zones. Is there anything that you can share right now that understand that is preliminary?
Well, we don't have anything right now to share like the thinking that's going in it. And really, this is DOT, you know, so DOT doesn't have the sidewalk cafe program yet. They're managing the temporary program sort of as this legislation goes through to update, council legislation goes through to update the sidewalk cafe program, moves it over to DOT and they they begin the Kappa process. That's when the fee structure, you know, sort of the and the thinking behind it will come out and the public will have the ability to input on that.
That's correct.
And now also I I noticed, Al, when you were mentioning the various agencies that you're partnering with or plan to partner with once this comes under DOT, I I noticed SBS was left out of that. And what I'm thinking is there are some businesses that may want to do this. But there may be some logistical help that they they need, right? Perhaps there could be some type of grant or incentive program, the, you know, through SBS. Yes, we understand a business may have to pay for the fee, but to have the pods come online if you are having a pod, let's say for the roadway system, right? Things like that. Are are you, and this could be early as well, I understand that. Are there talks with other agencies such as SBS that do provide assistance to businesses already on what type of assistance may be available for businesses that want to do this, but perhaps capital is a problem?
Absolutely. That that was just an oversight on my part. It it wasn't meant to be an exhaustive list, but um but absolutely SBS would be a, you know, part of the conversation and a and a key component to building out the rules for for the the permanent program.
And and they have been a partner during the temporary program. When we were rolling this out, you know, we we meet with SBS, I believe bi-weekly, just kind of going over. They've been very important in helping us reach the outer boroughs, have awareness of the temporary program. They've been very key in getting support for restaurants that might need some extra support in doing outdoor dining. And they've also been very key in communicating rules when they change sort of like what restaurants can expect with the new rules. sort of like what restaurants can expect with the new rules. And so they're, they're involved very much with the temporary program. They're involved with the permanent program and they're going to be a key partner in sort of getting those communications out, getting the support out, working with bids. And, you know, we expect sort of people that they have worked with, like the bids to, to come out and speak in, in favor of the text amendment at the public hearing.
And I, I know some community boards, you know, have already kind of expressed and some organizations have expressed their views on this already of some of it revolving around parking. And so what systems or metrics is DOT using or will use to kind of determine the impact on parking in particular communities, especially as we're looking at like the roadway programs, right? Like what, how much, how, what percentage of parking are we willing to lose to have this, things of that nature?
Yeah, I, I think, I don't think we'd look at it from that framework. I mean, we just, we really view it as a, as a trade-off of, of the curb space for a different type of use. You know, in many cases, the business improvement districts that we've worked with have been huge proponents of this as an activation of space and something that is beneficial to the businesses and you know, like I said previously, you know, under the emergency program, a lot of restaurants took advantage of, of whatever they could to get through a, a very difficult time. And, and I think in the permanent program, given the fee structure, given the, the four-year license and the, the investment that's required for a restaurant to manage that, I don't think we really anticipate seeing as many utilizing the roadway component, just because there are, you know, the seasonal aspect behind it with the removal during, during the winter months, there is a, a staffing component to that. There's going to be some places that it'll work very well and some places where it just won't make sense for them. But, you know, ultimately to your, to your question, it's, it's really a trade-off of that, of that curb space. And we know it's competitive, but it does provide a, a social benefit there too.
And if I was just to add, you know, touching on that seasonality aspect, they're not unlike maybe like a bike lane or sort of street infrastructure that would get put in, that would, you know, prevent any parking in the future. That these aren't really fully lost parking spaces since the permanent program is expected that the roadway structures be more temporary and removable. So I know people have built very sort of fortified structures right now, but since that isn't contemplated for the permanent program, we don't really see these as like fully lost parking spaces. Not to make it say that it would be easier, it's increasing parking, but, you know, they're not permanent losses.
Thank you for that. And, you know, just thinking through, you know, safety and things of that nature. I know I've seen on the news of, you know, a couple of times, I'm not sure how frequent it is, you know, accidents that sometimes may perhaps happen. Let's say particularly for the roadway. You know, structures, you know, are there signage? What, what kind of like safety precautions or measures are we thinking about? You know, if I'm a patron sitting on one of the roadways, Lord forbid, you know, a car comes and crashes, what, what does that look like? And then in terms of that, have we also thought through insurance or, or what is that? What does insurance look like from the business aspect for these structures on the road?
It's a, it's a good question as far as the insurance. I might have to, to get back to you on that. But under the, the emergency program, there are citing criteria and, and requirements for the roadway setup that are meant to ensure safety. And, and the, the key one is the, is the base, is the perimeter of the, of the roadway setup. And it has to be eighteen inches wide, filled with sand or soil to, to really create a, a strong barrier. And, you know, as you, as you mentioned, there were some, you know, unfortunate situations. There was, there was one in particular in Astoria that, you know, as the, as the details came out, it, it, it was apparently a, a road rage incident and, you know, led to a, luckily no one within the actual restaurant setup being injured. But, but a, a delivery cyclist was, was killed in that, in that particular crash. So, you know, over the last eighteen months, you know, we, we have seen the, the, the citing criteria, you know, really actually create a pretty safe environment for the roadway seating. Even in the winter months, there, there's a requirement for, for snow sticks that, that give plows the, the ability to know that they're approaching a setup. But, you know, I think in the, in the permanent program, the, the perimeter of the roadway setup and, and those guidelines will be very clear. And, and the main issue on our end is making sure that the, the setup is, is permeable and, and you could see through it. You could see signage and you could see the interactions, particularly at intersections. And that's, that's really the best, because it, otherwise it's, it's really just like having a parked car there in many ways. So with reflexive tape and reflective tape and, and the other items that are required.
Yeah, and I, I would just add, you know, this is a very new program. It's, it's been around, you know, over a year now, but it's still relatively new. But insurance, you know, will be required of restaurants for their outdoor dining areas. They were required for sidewalk cafes before and just, you know, we, 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 you know, it's not really something in the zoning text or the citing criteria rules, but just thinking through the permanent program, the work that we've done, talking to people about this, like, yes, the restaurants will have to have insurance for their outdoor dining.
That's it, Irving. Do you have?
Just a couple of quick questions. With regard to any street construction for the roadside dining, are there going to be standards of construction that have to be met in terms of the integrity of the structure? Because like, you know, as you said, we've seen pretty uneven, some really nice things happening in some plywood sheds.
Right. So you're talking about the, the construction of the actual restaurant setup?
Yeah, some of them have like a roof and some don't.
Right. Yes. And so the answer to your question is yes, under the, the ultimate citing guidelines in the permanent program, there's going to be clear criteria and, and renderings that, that clearly show what restaurants can set up both in the roadway and on the sidewalk. And, and we're looking to move away from those, you know, the classic plywood shed that we've seen and into a, you know, a strong base and, and a perhaps a shade or, or light rain covering. But, but certainly not a, a larger structure, the palatial setups that we've seen, that, that, that we've all seen.
So in terms of the, one of the criteria would be that you can be able to, drivers, pedestrians, vehicles can see through the structure. So would that allow for, let's say, clear plastic when it gets windy or colder?
I'd say to be determined. It's being, it's being reviewed right now. Many setups do have that. But, you know, even with that, even with that clear plastic, you're, you're kind of creating an enclosure that, that does have issues. And I think it's ultimately what we're trying to get away from.
Because that speaks to the seasonality. I mean, obviously when it gets cooler, windier, people would be inclined to put something up.
Right, exactly.
The, the last question I have is about the sidewalk and roadway dining situations. So is in essence DOT will be issuing revocable consents?
Yes.
It's, yeah, it's housed, the, the, the new unit will be housed within, within the unit that handles revocable consent. So yes.
Will be subject to review by the FCRC, I forget the exact. You know, the body that looks at the vocal sense throughout the city concessions, ranches.
Yeah, there's, there's way in the legislation updates of both the sidewalk cafe program and then the authorization of the roadway program, sort of looking at how to sort of streamline that process of giving out a revocable consent that doesn't have like too many forms of review, but still has enough review for everyone. And just like, so sidewalk cafes are in the city charter, that will still require a community board review.
Thank you.
And, and yeah, really the goal, you know, so DCWP license sidewalk cafes previously, that's moving to DOT who will also, you know, they're really the only agency, it makes sense to house the roadway program. And so then this way restaurants are only going to one agency for both a sidewalk roadway, you know, either or, they go to the same agency. And I, and I appreciate all the questions you guys had and I, I just want to note a, a lot of those deal with the roadway cafes. The zoning text amendment doesn't have an effect on the roadway program, sort of what we reviewed today. That's really just on geographic restrictions of sidewalk cafes and who can apply to that program. And that DOT will be coming back for the road as they're sort of rolling out the roadway program.
Understood.
And so we'll have more details on that and, and more description and the design guideline process and a clear idea of like, you know, what that will really look like. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Ben and Al. We definitely appreciate it. We don't have any other questions and as far as I know, there are no questions from the public, but we'll ask to just make sure one last time, any questions from the public? There are none. So we're closing calendar number nine. Thank you so much, DCP and DOT. And we will be resuming our regular calendar item, you know, program calendars two and three, then four and then five and six. Vanessa, please feel free to call the next item.
Calendar numbers two and three. ULP number two, one, zero, zero, four, one, ZMQ. And ULP number N two, one, zero, zero, four, two, ZRQ. Forty-five dash twenty, Eighty-third Street, effective community board CD four.
Hi, Richard Lobel of Sheldon Nobel PC for the applicant. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Richard.
Um, Mr. Joseph, may we share our screen?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. So, thanks to everyone. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see.
Richard, I can share if you want.
I think, are you able to see it?
Yes.
Great. So, good afternoon again. Once, once again, Richard Lobel for the applicant. I'm joined by Fan Batum from my office. We are here today for the forty-five, twenty, Eighty-third Street rezoning. With me today is John Silviano from Barone Management, the applicant for the rezoning, as well as Dwayne Andrews from Patrick B Jenkins, Kenneth Miraski and Isaac Daniel Astrakhan from Stephen B Jacobs, who are the project architects. And finally, Kevin Williams from Equity Environmental, the environmental consultants. Due to the length of the Queensborough President's hearing, we're happy to go as quickly as possible and answer any specific questions that are raised by you, Mr. Joseph, or, or by Mr. Point. So, to summarize the nature of the actions here, we're here for rezoning at forty-five, twenty, Eighty-third Street. The development site itself is two lots, lots eighty and two twenty-three, which is roughly forty-four thousand square feet of lot area. This is located in Queens District Four. The actions are twofold. The first would be to rezone from an M one-one to an R seven A zoning district, with the second to be an amendment to the appendix F to require mandatory inclusionary housing. Currently, both options one and two are mapped. The proposed project would result in construction of a residential building, roughly nine stories and a hundred and forty thousand square feet with approximately a hundred and sixty-three dwelling units. Those dwelling units would of course be composed twenty-five to thirty percent of affordable, permanently affordable housing units. So that's numbers somewhere between forty-one and forty-nine units. The action would also allow for an adjacent school, the Renaissance Charter School, to be as of right. We'll talk about that a little bit later in the application materials. So you can see here from the enhanced tax map that the R seven A that's proposed is currently surrounded by numerous residential zoning districts. We have R six B and R six districts to the west and south, R seven A districts to the north and east. So this is a block which is currently partially zoned R seven A. You can actually see that better in the land use map. And so in nineteen, in, in two thousand and six, the northern portion of this block, everything you see to the north of the dotted lines was actually rezoned to R seven A from the existing M one-one district. So that was, that was approved at the time without having the requirement of affordable housing at the time. So that was prior to mandatory inclusionary housing. So what we're really doing here is, is restoring R seven A to the entirety of this block. It makes sense for several important reasons. Once, one of course is that you no longer have this island of M one-one use surrounded by these residential uses. The second is that you now have these adjacent residential buildings to the north, which don't have to contend with a manufacturing neighbor. Importantly also, the school that's located on the eastern portion of the sighting will be called out later in the plans is itself an, a residential and community facility proposed use. So that use in and of itself is not permissible in an M one district, would be permissible in the rezone R seven A district. That application was subject to a BSA special permit, which came before the community board and BSA in two thousand and twenty was approved June twenty twenty last year. So almost the entirety of this block is either residentially zoned or has community facility uses. This would allow us to create an entirety of residential use on the entire block. You can see here from the zoning change map, what is proposed here again, the prevalence of the R six B, R six and R seven A districts around us. And this is the site. So you can see on the eastern portion of the site, this school, which is in, in construction, the Renaissance Charter School, a, you know, beloved charter school in the area, the building after built will house upwards of five hundred students. This was a subject of must, much discussion with the community and with the BSA. And, you know, we, we are very much thrilled to have been a part of that application and also to have the opportunity to make this school a conforming use. There is a kind of a tangential benefit to rezoning the entirety of this lot, R seven A, and that's to make this conforming use to the extent in the future, maybe five, ten, fifteen years from now, that the school desires to make any changes to their layout, they would be able to do so as of right. It's just considered to be a compatible use with the R district. With that, I would just bring up the plans. I would, to the extent that Ken is available to talk briefly, he can just discuss the building plans. As you can see, we've got the existing four-story, sixty-three thousand square foot school building to the east of us, highlighted in blue, and the proposed residential building, nine stories to the west. You, you will also notice the footprints and, and building envelopes for the residential buildings to the north. Ken, are you able to run through the zoning calics and plans?
Sure. Richard, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Ken Maras, you from Stephen B Jacobs Group. Right here on the, the screen, we have the bulk shown in white. In the lower right-hand corner, we give a breakdown of the mix of apartments. About thirty studios, seventy-nine one bedrooms, thirty-eight two bedrooms and sixteen three bedrooms for a total of a hundred and sixty-three units. Based on MIH options, they'll be broken down below. Next slide. And we can go back and, and look at those later, maybe. So the majority of the residential development would be proposed on the west side of the, the lot, fronting Forty-seventh Avenue at the corner of Eighty-second Street. In blue is the school that Richard mentioned earlier. Next slide. So the building is proposed to be nine stories with a below-grade cellar for accessory parking. We're proposing to provide amenity roof space and a courtyard for the residents as part of a quality housing requirement in the zoning. Next slide. And then here are some, just illustrations of the building and the proposed materiality. You know, we're, we're trying to come up with something that's kind of consistent with nearby residential development, metal paneling, vegetation, you know, rooftop landscape. You know, rooftop landscapes will, will be introducing sustainable measures required as part of recent local law amendments that were made, like rooftop green zones, photovoltaic, that sort of thing. Stormwater management was a common question brought up during the community board meetings. We're, we're going to be providing onsite detention tank and roof retention systems to manage our stormwater onsite, which is a big improvement from what is currently on the site, which is just an open parking lot and manufacturing building, which is managing any stormwater. So we will be introducing those measures in the development. And then I think there's another rendering on the next slide, just showing coming down eighty-second street at the corner. I believe that's it, Richard.
That's correct.
Oh.
The charter school. So, um, you know, with that, we would just conclude by saying that this rezoning supports restoring residential districts to the entirety of the block. You know, given the surrounding residential districts as well as residential uses adjacent to this property, it's clear that to have a manufacturing use, which would amount to be roughly forty-four thousand square feet of manufacturing space adjacent to, to eight-story residential buildings in a school is not something necessarily that would be compatible here. So with that, and with the, the adjacency of the subways within two blocks of the site, this presents a real strong opportunity for the area to benefit from not just residential units generally, but also from upwards of forty-one to forty-nine affordable units to be created through mandatory inclusionary housing. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. If I remember correctly, CB four disapproved the application and there were a number of concerns that they had. Would you be able to just kind of walk us through your response and how you're addressing the concerns that they raised?
Sure. So primarily the concern was with regards to the units and with regards to affordability. This is something which we've encountered before with the community board. You know, I would go back in time, Frank, to two thousand and nineteen, when the school application first came before the community board with regards to the, the B S A special permit. At the time, we were very open and honest about that application. In the event that we were able to rezone the property more quickly, the school would have been part of this application and we would have had a, you know, rezoning and with that, without the need to go to B S A for a special permit. We couldn't do that because the school needed to locate more quickly. It was apparent that we needed to go for this subsequent special permit application prior to a rezoning. We did that. We informed the community board at the time of the intention to go forward with this rezoning. So this has been on the table for, for over two years. The community board had concerns around affordability and they had concerns around density. With regards to affordability, we are providing either option one or option two. We've been in discussions with council member Daniel Drama about which option would best suit the area. As an option one building, a full ten percent of the units would be at an average of forty percent AMI representing deep affordability. So, you know, this, this building has a chance to offer some real affordability. Community Board four did not see it that way. They felt that the affordable units that we were offering were insufficient. The second was with regards to overcrowding and with regards to infrastructure. And, you know, we had a very honest conversation with them with regards to the measures being taken for this building. The experience of the developer, not just generally in Queens, but also with regards to the school building and the fact that measures would be being taken so as not to tax the surrounding infrastructure. You know, we've been to community board four before. We came in last year on a job in Corona with a, with a rezoning project. They, they similarly rejected that based upon overcrowding and, and, and overdevelopment. So it's not something that, that is unknown with regards to their objections. However, here, the land use rationale here is really strong. And I think that the developer is one which is, has expressed a, not just a willingness, but an actuality, has worked with the community, particularly in regards to the charter school and looks forward to continuing to work with the community with regards to this building.
I mean, what, what were the percentages that the community board was looking for with affordability? And, and when you talk about, you said ten percent will be at an average of forty percent AMI. What's the deepest that you're going since ten?
Right. So, um, are you able to see the screen in front of you?
Yeah.
So there were not specifics with regards to the community board's request. It was a general statement that this building did not serve the area's needs. The forty percent AMI, which you see before you, is a, goes from a mix of family size of one to four, let's say. So the forty percent, the lowest AMIs would reach levels of thirty-one thousand and change to forty-five thousand and change for income levels, as well as rents of between five hundred and sixty-seven for a studio, nine thirty for one bedrooms, eleven hundred for two bedrooms and twelve hundred for three bedrooms. You know, it's important to note here, Frank, that in one of the criticisms we faced before the community board was with regards to unit sizes. And here we're offering unit sizes in which a full third of the building is twos and threes, two bedrooms and three bedrooms. And given the regulations under mandatory inclusionary housing, those two and three bedroom units will be available for affordable housing as they will be for the general population of the building. It's, it's not just cramming a bunch of studios and one bedrooms in here. This offers some really meaningful unit sizes and importantly, offers meaningful unit sizes to families who may not otherwise be able to get, you know, apartments of this nature in this area. So again, you know, we're sympathetic with the discussion of the community board. We tried to really, you know, focus on that portion of the conversation, but at the end of the day, you know, we're, we're, we're working on this affordability and I imagine with council member Drama, we're going to keep working on it going forward.
I have no further questions. Irving, do you have any?
I, I just have some questions about the, the market rate apartments. You know, obviously you're not going to be able to get Manhattan-type rents. I mean, have you, how are you looking at that?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll speak for a moment and then if John Silviano's on, he may want to weigh in. But, um, you know, the, the project has taken some time. This was, this was started prior to COVID. I know that, that the applicant has had many discussions with local brokers with regards to market rate units and, and what might be available. We, you know, the, the fact is the school building is near completion or on its way to being completed. The residential building is not. So I don't think that there's any specificity as far as the market rate units yet, other than, you know, we expect that there'll be sufficient demand to, to occupy those. John, is there any more specifics as far as the, the actual rent levels are concerned?
The actual dollar amounts, we don't have anything specific, but as you said, we have been in contact with various local brokers. And since, you know, a project with this proposed rezoning probably wouldn't be available for occupancy for, you know, two to three years after the proposed zoning is contemplated. We would have to evaluate that within six months of completion and come up with a strategy that works.
Do you know the rents of the buildings just to the north of your, of your site?
Um, I know those were condo units, but I do believe some of the units were rented after, you know, a, a person bought them. I could find out those numbers and report back. We actually know who the developer of that building is.
Thank you.
I also have a question.
Yes.
Again, in, in light of the fact that CB four unanimously opposed this project, I just wanted to know if you have also been exploring opportunities since the full board meeting on how to give back to the community, like maybe partnering with and/or funding some of the local institutions in that area. So for example, I'd like to highlight, there's a Queens Public Library in Elmhurst, as well as Elmhurst Hospital, which we all know was severely overwhelmed since, you know, it, it's located within the epicenter of the epicenter of the pandemic last year. And there's also, I believe, adult daycare centers and senior centers in that area as well. So I just want to know if you've been exploring those types of opportunities.
Well, I, I think, and thank you for the question. I think firstly, um, you know, a lot of the discussion at the community board centered around affordability and, and unit sizes and such. So with regards to that specific discussion, we are working on that. And, and I know we'll continue to work on it through our time at the council. With regards to community facility use on the site, you know, the, the school actually occupies in terms of the floor area, a one point four F A R for the entirety of the site. So that building, which I actually think I misstated is probably closer to sixty-six thousand square feet, takes actually the community facility square footage from this site. So none of the, I've had applications before in front of community board four, where for example, there was a discussion about getting space in the building for a senior center. And, and when that exact point came up, we actually in that application, which came forward last year, were able to do that. This is not as really kind of a similar application in that you don't have ground floor commercial here. You don't have community facility use other than this massive community facility building next door. So the short of it is, we're happy to enter into any of those conversations. Barone Management here is a, is a, you know, they're a, they're a member of the community. They basically are, have partnered with Renaissance. The school actually stood up at the community board hearing to say, you know, really supportive things about them. So while we haven't explored those specific opportunities with regards to hospital space, et cetera, I'm certain that, and John can speak if he'd like to, that we're happy to look at that going forward.
Yes, absolutely. We would entertain any of those conversations. And to elaborate on the school, this is the second Renaissance Charter School in the Queens area. And their first one is a very successful school, has a very high rate of graduating high school kids into college and tremendous test scores as well. And this Renaissance school that will be in this particular building has also now entered into their second year of incubation in an off-site location. So they're going to be coming into this building with, I believe, four grades by the time this is complete for a school year next year.
Thank you very much for that. Any other questions from our team? No, we have no questions from the public, but I'll ask one more time just to ensure any questions from the public at this time.
There's no speakers online.
You said?
There's no speakers on the site.
No speakers. So with that said, we are closing calendar item two and three. Thank you so very much, everyone, for presenting. And we will go to the next calendar item. Vanessa, can you please call them up?
Calendar item number four, U-Lerp number N two, one, zero, two, three, two, Z R Q. One hundred and sixty dash oh five Archer Avenue, Special Downtown Jamaica District zoning text amendment, effective Community Board twelve.
Hi, and good afternoon. My name's Rachel Skoll. I'm an associate at Greenberg Char. We represent Archer One LLC and I am joined today by Harley Brown on behalf of ownership. Last week, Community Board twelve unanimously approved this, approved recommendation of this application, which would allow for a curb cut on a currently restricted portion of Archer Avenue. Archer One LLC owns one sixty dash oh five Archer Avenue, shown in the darker shade here, located at the northeast corner of Archer Avenue and a hundred and sixtieth street, just north of the above-ground L A double R tracks. The site is located in a C six-three zoning district in the Special Downtown Jamaica District. Here are some photos taken a little bit earlier that were submitted with our application to give you an idea of where the project is. You see the above-ground subway tracks here, or L A double R tracks, sorry. The site is currently being developed with an as-of-rate twenty-two-story building that will contain three hundred and fifteen dwelling units as well as ground floor cellar and either, and retail or medical use. Construction topped out earlier this year and now we are working on the building's exterior envelope and building out the interior. Construction is about seventy percent complete and we expect people will begin moving into the building in March of two thousand and twenty-two. The building is not required to provide a loading berth. However, we would like to provide a loading berth to be used by residents moving into and out of the building as well as by retail or medical tenant if needed. The new building does not have space for a loading berth curb cut on one hundred and sixtieth street because the curb cut cannot be located within fifty feet of the intersection with Archer Avenue. And the balance of the one hundred and sixtieth street frontage is occupied by the new building's parking garage and residential lobby. Therefore, we are seeking a text amendment to create an authorization that would allow the City Planning Commission to authorize curb cuts on restricted streets where a zoning lot has more than one street frontage. We are simultaneously applying for the authorization and are proposing this fourteen-foot wide curb cut, including the spays, to be located on Archer Avenue, approximately three feet from the site's eastern edge. The authorization will require that the commission make the finding shown here, that the proposed curb cut would not be hazardous to traffic safety, that it will not create or contribute to traffic congestion or induly inhibit vehicular movement, not adversely affect pedestrian movement, but not interfere with the efficient functioning of bus lanes and would not be inconsistent with the character of the existing streetscape. With regard to findings one, two, and four shown here, the proposed curb cut would not be hazardous to traffic safety. Is expected to draw minimal traffic and its use will be pre-scheduled, allowing the applicant to provide a flagman at the curb cut during scheduled use. As a result of conversations with the community board and with council member Miller, we have agreed that the loading berth would not be used during the A M rush hour of seven A M to ten A M or P M rush hour of four P M to seven P M. And that any use of the loading berth by a retail tenant would take place overnight between seven P M and seven A M. The proposed curb cut would prevent curbside pickups and drop-offs that would otherwise take place on Archer Avenue and one hundred and sixtieth street by giving moving vans or trucks an off-street place to park instead of trying to find parking on surrounding narrow streets or parking illegally. With regard to finding three, the loading berth associated with the curb cut would prevent trucks from coming on, coming to this, would prevent trucks coming to the site from blocking the sidewalk or idling curbside, curbside. And the proposed flagman would, would ensure pedestrian safety. And finally, with regard to finding five, the proposed curb cut would not be inconsistent with the character of the existing streetscape. The portion of the site's Archer Avenue frontage occupied by curb cuts would actually be reduced from what was there previously. And neighboring blocks also feature curb cuts on Archer Avenue. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so very much for sending this. I don't have any questions at this moment. I know the community board was very supportive of this. So thank you for working with them throughout the entire process. Irving, any question?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Yep, I don't believe we have any questions from the public. Um, but I'll, just to be consistent, I'll ask one more time, any questions from the public? No, thank you so very much. We really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Now we're closing calendar number four and we'll move on to our next and final item. Vanessa?
Calendar items number five and six, U-Lerp number two, one, zero, one, six, four, Z M Q. And U-Lerp number N two, one, zero, one, six, five, Z R Y. One hundred and three dash sixteen Van Wyk Expressway, rezoning, affected Community Board ten.
Good afternoon. Once again, Richard Lobel for the applicant. So Frank Irving, thank you for hearing us today. I'm joined by Wesley Zhang, who is with one oh three sixteen Van Wyk Expressway LLC. Uh, and I'm going to share my screen and we're going to run through the presentation. This is going to be very quick. This is a rather modest rezoning located at one oh three sixteen Van Wyk Expressway. So as you can see from the circled area, the project area is along the Van Wyk Expressway, south of Liberty Avenue. It is zone R three A. The rezoning proposal, as can be seen here from the enhanced tax map, would rezone this to an R six B. The R six B with a C two-three overlay reflects what already exists along Liberty Avenue. So this would take that existing zoning district and bend it around to the right, offering that same context that already exists along these major thoroughfares. You can see from the land use map that the commercial overlay along Liberty is widely utilized and resulted in what largely is intended in the rezoning, which is R six B residential dwelling units with commercial on the ground floor. Similarly, here, the proposal would allow for a four-story building with ground floor commercial use amounting to roughly seven thousand square feet and residential use above with roughly thirteen thousand square feet, amounting to roughly eighteen residential units, of which five to six would be affordable, depending on the affordability level. So you can see from the pictures in the area, much of the surrounding area is dominated by vacant lots on our side of the block, as well as by vacant lots on our side of the block, as well as the Van Wick, which is directly in front of this property. So this would allow for some meaningful development, allow for the creation of some residential units, including permanently affordable units for the surrounding area, uh, which is likely why this was almost unanimously approved by Queens Community Board tenth. We note that the zoning map here would extend to allow for that R six B. It would also cover some of the lots that front on Liberty Avenue. So this is somewhat of a correction, corrective action as well. There's a rear five or six feet from those lots fronting on Liberty, which would now be wholly located within the R six B formerly, they were located in the R three A. The plans and materials are very straightforward. You can see curb cut and entrance to the parking on Van Wick, uh, as well as the footprint of the building, a four story building with ground floor commercial. The ground floor would, uh, house a sixty five hundred to seven thousand square foot commercial store. There would be a residential lobby with a ramp down to parking. The parking would allow for roughly thirteen cars and as well as a bike parking. The upper stories are fairly standard, resulting in a mix of studio, one and two bedroom apartments. And here you can see the massing, there are already a number of three to four story buildings in the immediate area. But this would, as we said, allow for kind of a contextual use. Again, the four story with permitted by the R six B is already prevalent in much of the area along Liberty Avenue. So with that, um, that's really the sum of the rezoning. Again, we were thrilled to get such strong support from the community board and we'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Thank you very much, Richard, on mine. And I don't have any questions. Irving, do you?
I just have one question. In your rendering, it appears that the driveway will be between the new building and the adjacent property to the south.
Yeah, the ramp down is intended to be on Van Wick, uh, adjacent to the personal, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And once again, to be consistent, I don't think we have anyone from the public here to testify, but we'll ask, is there anyone, members of the public? No? All right. Thank you so very much, Richard. That is all for all of our calendar items for today. I want to thank our entire team once again for working through all of this. And, and thank you for everyone who came and presented and testified. This concludes our hearing for today. Our next hearing is on October, our next land use public hearing is on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one at nine thirty A M and we hope to see folks there. Thank you very much.